This is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission on November 5th, 2020, being held virtually pursuant to the Governor's executive orders. Mr. Andy Fox will be absent tonight and seated for him will be Victoria Goss. We have three items which have been postponed. The first one is the town of Greenwich, Eastern Greenwich Civic Center at 90 Harding Road, and that is actually two items, one for the municipal improvement, and then another one for the site plan and special permit. And the third item that has been postponed is Shirley and Hokai Wen for a final coastal site plan and special permit at 2 Vista Drive. With that, we can start with the regular meeting. Our first item is a discussion item. Colin 53, the applicant is Colin 53 Forest LLC at 51 Forest Avenue, and it is for a pre-application review. And Mr. Cohen, I assume you are representing the applicant? Oh, you need to unmute. Hold on.
Is the recording started?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
But thanks for remembering, because I forgot earlier today and I just had to do minutes again.
Thanks, Mrs. Alvin. Bruce Cohen representing Collins 53 Forest LLC, which is the owner of an office building in Old Greenwich, pretty much at the corner of Forest Avenue and Tomaq. This is a building of about 40,000 square feet that was developed in the 1980s together with the residential complex that is known as Old Greenwich Gables. I wonder, Pat, if you could put up the first image that we shot over to you today?
Happy to do it. Hold on.
Thank you. So this is a site plan of the entire parcel as it was originally developed. I'm sure that you're familiar with the Old Greenwich Gables. It's a fairly large condominium project that was developed, as I say, in the 1980s. The office building, which is at the right-hand corner of the colored portion of the screen that you're looking at, was a part of that development. The entire parcel was 9.6 acres. It was formerly owned by Electrolux, and some of you may remember the redevelopment that took place at that time that resulted in Old Greenwich Gables and the office building that I'm talking about. It was developed under the GBINDRE zone, which is an industrial redevelopment zone, and I think most people feel that it worked out very nicely. The office parcel has been separately divided from the residential portion. And Pat, if you could show the next screen that shows the office parcel all by itself. And there it is. And it was divided off as a matter of title by the commission, but under the INDRE zone, it remains as a part of a single zoning lot together with the Old Greenwich Gables parcel. And that leads to the problem that we have. Our goal is to put in a separate driveway for the office portion. The driveway that's used right now is way off to the upper left-hand corner of this image, and it is the main driveway for the residential complex. So right now, office traffic and the Old Greenwich Gables traffic is mixed together. And so our thought was to, for the benefit of both, to put in a separate driveway, and while we're doing it, to add five parking spaces next to that turnaround. When I say that it's to the benefit of both, it's our clients, the owner of the office building, that's initiated this, but we have talked to the Condominium Association and they're in favor of it. Should the commission approve the direction that we're taking, our application will include not only something from the condominium association, but also from Scott Marucci, who's already taken a look at this and told us verbally that he's got no problem with the driveway. Pat, if you could put on the last image, that shows where the driveway is going to be. I guess the image to the right, the Site Utility Plan, shows it more clearly. As I said, Scott has taken a look at this and he's got no problem in terms of proximity. Our traffic engineer will, with an application, also provide an assessment of the traffic impacts, which he's already told us will result in an improvement of circulation onsite for both the condo owners and the office tenants, and will have no adverse effect on the street. So now we get to the problem of doing this. The problem is that by putting in the additional blacktop, we're adding about 2,000 square feet of lot coverage. As we stand right now, we... The parcel that you're looking at, the office parcel, complies with lot coverage as it exists right now, which is 60%, and will, after the addition of that, also comply. However, because we're treated as a single zoning lot, we have to deal with the fact that the Old Greenwich Gables lot coverage does not comply. It's somewhat over, and it would become even more over if we were to add this additional lot coverage. I believe that the tactical way to handle this is under the provisions of Section 6112-6F, which allows the commission to authorize modifications in this zone of maximum lot coverage, "quotes, provided that the resulting increase in coverage is commensurate with any increased FAR allowed in accordance with Section 62 of the same regulation." So our view is that the commission has it within its authority to grant this additional lot coverage to permit us to put in this driveway, provided that the addition is commensurate with any increased FAR. And in fact, fortunately, when this project was approved, the commission did permit an increase in FAR from .5 to .72, which represents a 45% increase. So the increase overall will be far, far less than that. In other words, it won't exceed that additional FAR increase. So our request to you tonight, by way of this pre-application, is to see if you agree with me that Section 6112-6 does permit the commission to grant this additional coverage on this part of the larger zoning lot. Should you agree and we go forward, our second request is that you allow us to proceed based upon a survey of this piece alone and not to do a complete resurvey of the Old Greenwich Gables parcel. We know that that doesn't conform already.
Just a point of clarification. I don't believe that we can actually give you an approval for anything that you propose to do. We can tell you directionally what we're thinking, but you know that this is completely non-binding, these pre-applications. So I don't think that we could make any kind of indication on the coverage or on the separateness of the lot for you. I mean, we can give you... Pat, you and Katie were just talking about the pre-app. How do you see that? You need to unmute though.
I think the guidance being given here would, I guess, would be a direction that the commission would be acceptable to receiving the information at the next application, you know, the real application. So I agree, it's not a firm answer, but again, if that is an acceptable amount of detail and the commission would be willing to hear the application under that section, I think that's, I think that's directionally what the pre-app's about, you know. But again, it's non-binding, so...
I just want to be very careful. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
I think, if I could just go back up, I think what Mr. Cohen really wants to know is, is the commission feeling that this needs a variance or if this is something that could be considered under the special permit? And because obviously that changes the order in which he would go and do things. So if we can give him that answer, you know, I think that's the purpose of the pre-app. The other item is a little bit more of how do you want the survey information to be presented? And we can talk about that separately, but...
We understand, Mrs. Alvin, that this is certainly non-binding, but we would appreciate a little direction so that we can take the next step to move this forward. And that's about it. I've said my piece. We would like a direction about whether or not we could proceed on the basis of the special permit powers that the commission has and whether or not we can provide the survey information on the Old Greenwich Gables portion of this property based on the GIS, which we think would be accurate enough.
Okay. Do I have any comments from the commission?
Mr. Cohen, why after 30 years is this an issue with this office building?
Well, to be honest with you, Mr. McCray, partly it's based on the market right now. The office market is not doing well. We need to, our building needs to expand its attractiveness to tenants. Otherwise, we're going to have an empty office. I'm not saying that this is, you know, the end of the world, but it will make a big difference in terms of the attractiveness of the site. Right now, a tenant, you know, looking at this building has got, or the visitor going to the building has got to go through the residential gate manned or unmanned and make his way through the Old Greenwich Gables before he finds his way to the office building, which is kind of goofy. But that's the way it was done 30 years ago.
And signage doesn't help?
Well, that's my next question. On page eight, you said, we're talking about signage and how it's confusing because it says Old Greenwich Gables. Rather than jump through all of the hoops for a new driveway, wouldn't it been easier just to actually work on signs at that entrance? It would seem as if I was entering some kind of an office park, you know, looking for, you know, that address or, you know, the building. Wouldn't it have just been easier just to fix that sign?
Well, I don't know if you've been there recently, Mr. McCray.
I was there yesterday, Monday.
Yeah, but you don't feel like you're in an office park. You feel like you're in a condominium complex, it seems to me. You know, signs might help, but it certainly, it would not be as useful to the office tenants, the office visitors as a separate, clearly designated accessway, which, you know, I think could work in this case.
Although I was around in the 80s, I don't remember what the actual decision was or any of the site plan issues. Have you looked into why this was configured this way originally?
I have not. We've looked at it. It's a final site plan 1238, and we'll provide some more information about that with a final application. But I don't know whether it was a matter of cost, whether or not they had the building leased as it was at that time. I don't know. I do go back to the 80s, but I don't...
I think my concern was more of actually what the commission at that time thought about this development, you know, and access onto Forest Avenue there.
Yeah. I have looked at some of the staff comments and the decision from the original application. I didn't see anything in there that dealt with that. My guess is that the commission was acting, you know, the plans that the Collins family developed and presented at that time.
Well, at the time, there was a lot of objection to the development, as I recall, and they may have wanted to limit the number of curb cuts.
It would be.
It would be good to see that and actually have that, so we can understand their state of mind at that time.
Yeah, because this was, if you remember, Mr. Cohen, this was quite the controversial application at the time. So I would guess that what we would find is that there was concern about the curb cuts, but if Scott Marucci, if they're telling you now that there is not a concern about adding a curb cut. Peter Lowe, Victoria?
Before, a couple more here.
Oh, sorry.
I guess you had indicated that DPW comments are forthcoming. You've got traffic issue or traffic engineering coming.
No, they're not forthcoming because this is a pre-app. So they would be forthcoming if we, when we make the final...
That's what I meant. What's, why five new spaces? What does that provide?
Five spaces. You know, the problem, part of the problem is, if you look, Mr. McCray, at the last image, there is a fairly large parking area of the, well, do you have it nearby where you can see it or maybe?
Maybe Mr. Leroux could put it up.
Pat, I tell you what, could you put up the sec, there, that's good too. Well, that's even better. Up right there. That's best. There is a fairly large parking area to the left of the building, or I guess to the west of the building. That, by agreement, that parking area is shared with the condominium association. So it's not fully available all the time that the building needs it. Those five spaces would go just to the left of the turnaround would be very helpful in terms of providing some spaces that are just dedicated to the office use.
Okay, and they'd be in addition to the ones that are actually under the building and to the east of the building.
Yeah.
Mr. Leroux, can you zoom in on the circle?
That I might not be able to do, but let me, oh, there you go. Look at me.
Oh, you're the best. Keep going.
Whoa. This is the existing condition, Mr. McCray? Is that what you wanted to look at?
That's what I want to see, yep. Thank you.
It seems to be as far as I can get.
Okay, so we have a number of trees that are there that actually, of course, have 30 years, I think, have actually grown in. I think one of the interesting things about this view shows the significant buffer between the building itself and Forest Avenue. When you return, I think actually addressing the removal of all those trees and the buffer and a comprehensive landscape plan would be an important thing to have with us for us. It's, looking at street view, actually being out there on the site the other day, I think one of the things that makes this building successful is that it is set back from the street and that over time, the landscaping has matured and is a benefit to Forest Avenue. Yeah, Mr. Cohen, you're actually aware of what's happening across the street with the civic center?
Yes.
Okay, and also the bridge down the street?
Yeah.
And it's my understanding DPW is doing work in Harding Road. Any thoughts on schedule would be appreciated as well. You know, are we going to be digging up Forest Avenue and having it all at the same time when people are trying to run around the work on the bridge? And we're going to be building a civic center at the same time?
I understand.
Okay. So getting back to what I talked about, why not change the sign? I think we would actually like to see what the building owner has in mind for signage. It would seem to me that this is a identity issue specifically. And right now, because it has no identity, if we're actually specifically adding the driveway, is there some kind of a multi-tenant sign proposed or how is that going to work?
Okay, let me just say that we're sort of at the beginning of this process. We're looking for a legal direction in terms of this one coverage issue where we stub our toes. And my guess, although I'm not certain, is that some of these issues, like signage and landscaping, have not been fully explored by the owner. But I can tell you that when we come back to the commission, they will have been.
That's why we're doing this, right? For a pre-app, you know?
Yeah.
You want directions, so we're directing.
I, there's just, I need, I'm, there was just a question of clarification. As I look at the newer aerial, that's a kind of an old aerial, I think, of, of, that you've got there. Is the, the part of the driveway that goes to the office building then has a large section of paved area that goes, that's by the Old Gables pool? Can you toss that up, Patrick?
The first image, Pat.
Thank you.
So who uses that big paved area there?
Let me be sure we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah. Oh, I could probably do my own.
I think if...
It's the aerial photo. Keep going. It's the photo, Pat.
Oh, the aerial photo.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have that presentation right here. I'm sorry.
It actually shows on the first lot coverage exhibit as well, I think.
All right, I'll put that up first and then we'll...
So...
No, no, I mean the photo.
Yeah, but Mrs. Alvin, let me just, I think you're talking about that parking area next to the double driveway in the upper left?
No, I'm talking about right next door. So do you see the little orange rectangle at the very bottom, right over the word "coverage"? That's their swimming pool.
Oh, okay.
Well, it looks like a swimming pool in the aerial. To the right of that, there's a very large parking lot.
Yeah.
Now, that belongs to them, correct?
No, that's shared.
That's shared, and do their people use it for access?
Well, to park there, yeah.
And who parks there? Those units on the rear at the very bottom?
I don't know that.
Okay, so here's my question. What I'm wondering is, can't you get rid of some of the, I mean, that's a lot of impervious right there. And now go back to the site plan that shows the parking? Okay, your parking? All right, so that's not actually shared, that's your parking?
What are we talking about now?
Right where the arrow is, that's your parking?
That's shared.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
It's shared parking?
Yeah.
And the residents park there and you park there?
I believe so.
Okay, that would be an interesting question to find out because that's actually on your part of the property.
Yes, it is, but it's still shared.
Well...
By agreement, in other words, it was part of the initial, we'll get you all that.
Okay, so, no, no, no. Here's why you need to get it. This is why I'm asking you the question. So it's on your part of the property?
But we, if you're aiming toward taking out some of the asphalt, we cannot do that.
Okay, that would be the first question. And then the second question is, so if it's shared, is that part of what's throwing them over the coverage number? And if you took it, what would happen?
No, that is not, because when I said that on our portion, the office portion, we're legal.
Okay.
That incorporated that coverage as well.
Okay, can you go back up to that? Don't take it away yet, Pat.
Madam Chair, Michelle Cronin actually has her hand up. She'd like to maybe answer this question for you.
She'd like to really answer the question.
Yeah. Okay, Michelle Cronin, oh, I did somebody else instead, sorry. That happens sometime. I'm kicking him back down, sorry.
Okay, Michelle, you're on.
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi, Michelle.
Bruce is right that that area is shared parking. It's typically done, or the way it's set up from the original site plan was essentially on an hourly basis. So during the office hours, it's for office use, and then in the evening, it's for the residents. And where that pool is, that's actually, the pool is actually elevated, and you can drive underneath it, and there's a parking area there. So the residents use it and actually drive under the pool and into a parking lot.
I get you.
And that's just for the residents.
It is, exactly. And I, you know, with our site plan application, I can provide it, but at one point, I actually went through all the parking and I, you know, used Adobe and I marked every single space that was residential-only, office. I don't think there are only a few spaces that are office-only and then shared spaces.
So is it like an underparked or overparked type of area? Or is it when you go around, I'm talking about the site as a whole? And the reason I'm asking that is, to the point made before, like, are there spaces here and there that you can remove that aren't used very frequently and make up for the coverage?
Not on our side of the property, yeah.
Right, and I don't, and I don't think there's enough to make the entire lot conforming. Because it's over quite a bit. Oh, you're saying just that 2,000 square feet?
So like, I'm just saying, like, yeah, you can't do it on your own property, it sounds like, right? And then combining the lot to one lot, that's not an option? That won't help?
Say that again, Katie?
Like, because it's under 17.2, which no longer exists in the regulations?
Yeah.
So what happens if you remove that lot line? I mean, you're legally non-conforming now, so what if you, what if you remove it and are still legally non-conforming?
We can't, we can't remove the lot line because titles has been conveyed based upon that lot line, which is why the commission granted the division when it did in the 80s.
Right, okay.
The problem that we have, Ms. Alvin, is that when this project was first approved, everybody was legally compliant as far as lot coverage is concerned. It was the change of the regulations to include many areas of walkways and such that weren't originally included that has pushed everybody over. So this had been a compliant property, the entire thing. It just isn't anymore.
Mr. Cohen, real quick question. As you indicated, the residential is over, but the office is under. Is the office still under with the proposed driveway and parking?
Yes.
Okay.
Regis and me has calculated that.
If I may, Mr. McCray, I think what Cohen is saying is that if you take the area controlled by the office building, they meet the current regulations and they would meet it if you just considered that area. But I think technically for zoning purposes, it's the whole lot, the whole, the whole comment and the building, and that number to add it together is grossly over coverage. So I don't, I don't think, I personally don't think that you can say it's conforming for that portion. That portion is really part of the whole.
Right.
So I really think what Mr. Cohen is asking is, how much survey work is the commission going to be interested in? Can we acknowledge that, can they acknowledge, excuse me, that the Old Greenwich Gables is a non-conforming entity at whatever level that is? And we're detailed survey this corner, we're adding X. So we're only adding X to the non-conformity as opposed to saying we are at X now and we're going to Y. And so if that's, if that's agreeable, if that's enough detailed information, then they'll survey that. Otherwise, they'll have to go survey, you know, the whole four corners of the lot.
It might be tricky because we don't own it.
You're increasing a non-conformity.
We are, absolutely, which is... We are, we, absolutely, which is why we hear Ms. Goss. We're asking the commission to exercise its powers to permit us to do that under six, six dash one twelve.
I just read six dash one twelve, and it does appear to give us that power.
Take a look at six dash one twelve, sub six, sub F.
I did, I just looked at it.
Okay.
Okay, so that will, that would be our homework to take a look at that. Uh, in addition to the homework that you're going to go do. Do you know when the last survey was done for the residential? Uh, I have this stuff in your presentation. Is there something more, uh, that's more detailed or can be referenced that actually shows some of the, uh, the coverage issues?
I, I would guess not, Mr. MacRae. I don't, I don't think there would have been a reason to do that once the condominium was declared. I, I could be wrong. There may have been financing that caused them to do it, but I would tend to think not. But, but we certainly could research that and provide the most recent survey that's available.
That would be great if you can add that to your list, because I think if we're talking about a little bit of latitude, if we had something as a basis to show your proposal and what is a better record of what's out there for the residential, that may help a lot.
Okay.
Is there a sense, if you want to go, if you want to, um, have Mr. Cohen pursue the variance route or take it on yourselves?
Uh, I'd have to take a look at six one twelve, but if we do have latitude, uh, Mrs. Goss is, uh, thinks that it's there. Uh, I think actually it might be, it might be a good thing for us to take on and, uh, rather than a variance or anything, if we can actually take a peek at it and take a, take a really good, hard look at it. I, I think my biggest concern is really not coverage as much as anything is, as the impact to the area. Uh, but I will actually make a point of actually looking at six twelve, six one twelve.
The, um, I think that you made a very good suggestion earlier, Mr. MacRae, that I'd like to reinforce, which is you asked Mr. Cohen to consider the landscaping. And I think where he was going was you can, to the extent that you can offset the impact of the impervious addition. And that's the terms in which, right, Nick? That's where you were going?
Yeah.
He wasn't just saying, oh, can you make a pretty tree here? Why don't we have a landscaping plan? He was saying offset the effect of having the impervious addition, offset it for the neighborhood versus streetscape, and offset it environmentally by doing something that compensates for the loss of permeability.
I understand.
I think that's, I, I could be wrong. Um, so but that's how I'm reading it. Nick?
Right, so I, yeah, I agree with you. Actually, I'm looking at six one twelve right now. Uh, I'm seeing the, uh, the language that Mr. Cohen is actually referencing. Uh, I agree with Mrs. Goss on this. It does look like we do have a lot of, some latitude on that for a lot in building coverage.
Oh, she said we didn't. That was, Victoria, did I misunderstand you?
No, it looks like, it looks like we do.
Yeah, yeah, we do. Well, he doesn't, you know, Bruce has been a lawyer for a while. I mean, you know, he's got to get something right some of the time, right?
Not that long.
There's no accepts and buts.
I do remember when it was electoral.
Yeah, I don't think you're the only one sad enough to say, okay, um.
I'm not going there.
No, we are, we are going to rebuild the, the turnaround with permeable pavers. So it doesn't help us from a coverage standpoint, but it does help to take the asphalt away and.
Yeah, and I think if you do those things, um, I believe that we have two people who want to speak about this application. So I'm gonna see.
Can I, can I just ask one?
Of course.
Yeah, so I, I'm still a little bit puzzled, Mr. Cohen. Is, uh, is the genesis of this application a desire to upgrade the, the building and make it more attractive to, to tenants?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I'd also, this was mentioned yesterday, but I'd be interested in what, what if any there, the level of resistance exists on the part of DPW. Uh, this is gets to the impact on the neighborhood, et cetera, but also just.
Did you say DPW?
I did, yes.
Yeah, so you certainly will, will get a, a input from, uh, from DPW.
Yeah, and, and, uh, how, how many, how many offices or businesses exist there now?
You mean numbers of tenants?
Yeah.
Michelle, do you happen to know? I don't.
I don't know off the top of my head. I know they do have a large tenant that takes up essentially an entire floor.
Is there, is there currently a, a, a stress on parking?
Not that I'm aware of. I think, I think that what they were hoping to, to provide is additional, um, you know, spaces for people who are just gonna, who are visiting, visitors, not necessarily for employees.
Right.
There is some empty space.
But that would suggest that there might, might be some inconvenience that exists now. Or are we expanding? Is the, is there a tenant that might require more parking?
The, the problem, uh, slow is that th- there's empty space in the building. So it's a little tough to, you know, have a complete evaluation. But, um, I, I don't think that there is a problem right now in, given the occupancy of the building. But that could very well change.
But you're proposing adding five.
Five space, yes, in, in a way that would be.
Without a demonstrated need.
Uh, well, our clients who have been operating the building for 30 years believe there is a need. And will, if that is a, a concern, we'll provide some backup on that as well.
Okay, so you, I think you've got a good list of questions from us. Is everybody good with questions now? So we can just see what the public wants to say?
Yeah.
Yes, at the moment, we're good.
Two, um, people who would like to speak, I believe. I hope, Kit Mill, that you would like to speak about this application? Uh, Kit Mill, you need to unmute yourself. Kit Mill? Oh, yeah, no, not yet. Okay, I'm gonna go. Um, I'm gonna leave you up till you manage to unmute yourself, and I'm gonna go to the next person. It's RF Seb. If you would unmute yourself. Hmm.
Again, we are, we're discussing a, a pre-application meeting on, uh, for the fifty-three or fifty.
Well, they, they've had their hands up for a while, Pat.
I've just wondered if people are trying to save their place or think they're saving their place in life.
Yeah, because RF Seb is, I think that's Renee. And that's for a different application? Guys, I think she's interested in something else. She might be interested in this too, but. Um, okay, so if you're Renee Seb, can you, okay, I'm just gonna. Um, yeah, they have their hands up. So are you, Renee, could you unmute? And just let us know if you're here to speak? Okay, no luck. All right, I'm just going to, um, assume not. Okay. I'm going to assume that Kit Mill and Renee Seb do not want to speak or have walked away from their computers or something. So I think, Mr. Cohen, that the commission seems to be amenable. Is that a fair representation, Commission?
For me, yes.
For me, yes, the, the technicalities are quite interesting. Uh, but in, in concept, yes, I'm, I'm amenable.
Okay, all right, okay, so there you go. And you're, and I think you've already anticipated the guidance we would give is what can you do to make it better for the neighborhood? Make it, you know, because this, because this building, this whole development has settled in quite nicely that nobody ever even thinks about it anymore. But if we could do something that, to offset the impervious and the changes and also help the business market itself, that's great.
We understand. Thanks for your help.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cohen. I think you're done, right, for, for now?
I am.
Okay. Um, then, the next step, so we're gonna leave that application now and go to the next one, which is the Town of Greenwich Department of Public Works for, um, uh, the bridge over Cider Mill Creek. And I am assuming, Mr. Michael, that we should combine the, um, the two applications and you would like to discuss both at the same time so that we would do the site plan as well?
Correct.
Okeydoke, so we will open the next, the next two applications, number two and number three, which is the Town of Greenwich, um, for the bridge over the Cider Mill Brook, um, under Sound Beach Avenue. Or, yes, this is kind of under it. Um, and with that, Mr. Michael, if you would like to start.
And, and just a reminder that the municipal improvement is the planning function of the commission separate and apart from the site plan, which is the zoning function of the planning and zoning commission. So that you have to take, as you know, two separate actions, um, under two, one, under the plan of conservation development and the other under the zoning regulations. You had mentioned that the last time we did an MI, so I thought I'd bring it up again.
It's like, okay. Yeah, in fact, in fact, we actually said it to the Parks and Rec people when we were talking about, about the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. Okay, Mr. Michael.
Okay, so I, if you could make me a co-host to share the screen, that would be great. And then just for clarity while we're doing that, um, this is for a scenic road recommendations, not an MI, correct?
Correct, it's not a municipal.
It is a municipal improvement.
But it is, it is a planning function under the charter, though.
Correct, it's a planning charter under the, under the charter, but not municipal improvement.
Right, right, sorry, you're right, yep. And we also, but what we do have to do is because this is a scenic road, we have to make it consistent with what we do under the Charter for Scenic Roads and our regulations. Okay, now that we've done all that bureaucracy, let's look at your bridge.
Okay, are we seeing that now?
Yep.
Okay, so this is being presented to provide the Planning and Zoning Commission with information regarding the proposed improvements to the Sound Beach Avenue Bridge related to the request for CAM permit and to receive recommendations related to the alteration or improvements of a scenic road. Project is replacement of Sound Beach Avenue Bridge over Cider Mill Brook. Scope of the project has changed since last presented to the commission in 2018, being reduced to only replacing a bridge in poor condition. DPW is required to go to inland wetlands for approval for construction in the wetlands. On October 26, 2020, the project, as is presented to you tonight, received approval seven, nothing, with only a few minor conditions. The conditions are protecting the wetland soil in the staging area and coordination with staff before, during, and after construction. Sound Beach Avenue Bridge over Cider Mill Brook will be entirely replaced as part of this project. The existing Sound Beach Avenue Bridge was built in 1925 and rehabilitated in 1977 by getting a second culvert on the south side. The bridge is one of eighty-three bridges that the town owns and is responsible to maintain. Various traffic counts conducted in the area since 2012 indicate the average daily traffic is 14,500 vehicles per day, which ranks this segment of road in the top eight busiest segments in Greenwich. Sound Beach Avenue is classified as an urban collector based on the most recent Connecticut DOT functional classification map for the Town of Greenwich. The existing bridge superstructure is in poor condition and the substructure channels are eroding. Pavement will be fully constructed, curbing and sidewalks replaced. Accelerated bridge construction techniques will be used. The Sound Beach Avenue Bridge traverses Cider Mill Brook, which is a bell stream which eventually outlets to the Long Island Sound and originates in Stanford. Most state of Connecticut and federal regulated wetlands were located within the project area. Wetlands match the Connecticut lands and water course boundary. But land and water course limits are shown in the highway plan, number one of the submitted plan set. The bridge will be raised to increase the flood capacity and prevent overtopping and flooding during extreme storm events. The existing roadway elevation is 8.7 based on FEMA base flood elevations and elevation of 11 along Sound Beach Avenue is desirable in order to raise the bridge above the record storm elevation and reduce flooding potential to, of the road. Therefore, the design raises Sound Beach Avenue at the center of the bridge to elevation 11.34, which I'll get into a decent amount later. As part of.
I wanted to ask you something about that and I'll wait then, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
As part of the proposed bridge replacement, the existing two spans bridge structure will be replaced with a 38-foot single-span bridge. Sediment-deposited island due to the blockage from the existing western span of the bridge will be removed to provide more natural stream flow. For the coastal redevelopment permit, chapter 444 of the Connecticut gender statutes policies were reviewed for compliance. When assessing the suitability of the project and the capability of the resources for the site use, subsections D and F apply. The items that are part of this project that comply with this subsection include the bridge will be raised to increase the flood capacity and prevent overtopping and flooding during extreme storm events. The center pier will be removed, which increases the hydraulic capacity and reduces the likelihood of future obstructions occurring. The sediment deposits, deposited island due to the blockage from the existing western span will be removed to provide more natural stream flow. And, and flat out, the bridge has met its useful life and is needed, in a need of replacement. Following three slides show the impacts of just a one-year storm that occurred in 2018 at this location. The proposed project will not solve these conditions, but will improve the hydraulic capacity of the bridge. So we see here, this is one photo. Here's another photo that's from.
Not a one-year storm, right, on the left?
All of these are at the same exact storm, which is considered a one-year storm. So. And then this photo shows also the wooden walkway, which is attached to the outside of the bridge, which I'm going to touch on as well later in the presentation. Under the same state, state statute, when evaluating the potential beneficial impacts of the project, the restoration will include additional plantings along the stream bank to restore the riparian buffer. The project does not require the removal of any existing trees. DPW has coordinated with the Friends of Benny Park to create a landscape plan to restore the corner parcel, often referred to as the reading room, which will be used for construction staging. The intent of the proposed plan is to landscape it to match the native plantings proposed in the Benny Park master plan and to create a more usable space for the public to enjoy. The plan proposes to add seven trees, 54 shrubs within the planting beds and 120 plantings along the brook to stabilize the slope. Before I get into the details of the modifications to, to the elevation of the bridge, I want to make very clear that this project is a bridge replacement project and is not a project to address the flooding concerns of the neighborhood as identified in the drainage sub-studies that have been adopted by the Flood and Erosion Control Board. The town has certain regulatory requirements that include your building zoning regulations that must be complied with when building a new structure. A new bridge is expected to last between 50 to 75 years and hopefully more, and is a costly endeavor that we must be planned for future conditions. Cider Mill Brook at Sound Beach Avenue is located within a FEMA flood zone AE as shown here on this effective FEMA map. zone AE as shown here on this effective flood FEMA map. The current FEMA flood map elevation is eleven at this location. The map is subject to change in the future. Federal and state guidance recommends bridges be constructed one to two feet above the FEMA flood map elevation, or as close to that as possible based on the topography. Due to the proximity of the park and private property, the town is proposing to build this bridge at approximately elevation eleven, which does not provide that one to two foot of freeboard as is recommended. Although the impacts to the visual appearance of the area is the reason why, one of the main reasons why we're trying to minimize that placement of the freeboard. The driving factor of the bridge replacement is that the project is a bridge that's in poor structural integrity. On September ninth, 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved Benny Park scenic loop per section eleven dash thirteen of the Greenwich Municipal Code. Alterations or improvements to a scenic road require the applicant to submit to planning and zoning where the commission provides recommendations to the Commissioner of Public Works. Once these recommendations are received, the commissioner shall hold a public hearing regarding the proposed improvements. This proposal will maintain the historic nature and aesthetic views while maintaining while meeting regulatory and safety requirements. The current structure consists of two spans, a concrete deck span constructed in nineteen twenty-five, which is this half of the bridge. And concrete box culvert span added in nineteen seventy-seven to increase the hydraulic capacity. A center pier joins the two spans together. The existing bridge will be replaced by a single span precast concrete structure, therefore eliminating the center pier. Current bridge supports a timber pedestrian walkway, which I mentioned before and can see in the upper right-hand picture on the west side of the bridge. The proposed bridge will include the sidewalk on the inside of the bridge as part of the structure. So you can kind of see here where that structure is and it's being brought to the inside of the bridge. The existing walls on the bridge, which are also called parapets, will be raised from two feet high to three feet, three and a half feet high to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements and bridge safety requirements for sidewalks on a bridge. The debris which is accumulated within the culvert channels will be removed. And the bridge parapet ends will be curved inland so that metal guide rail will not be required, which will blend with the natural park landscape. During the design process, DPW worked with the design consultant to review options related to the protection of the bridge parapets as required by state and federal bridge design standards. First option reviewed included metal bridge rail with end anchorages and bright reflective impact attenuators at the ends of the rail. This plan shows the limits of where the guide rail would have been required to be installed per the aforementioned design standards. The second option reviewed and selected included curved masonry face end walls to protect the bridge pair to protect the bridge parapet in the event of impact. This plan shows the limits where the curved end walls are proposed. The stone masonry proposed on the facade of the end walls will be the same as a stone on the proposed parapet, keeping with the same look as the existing bridge and blending with the surrounding park setting. The proposed structure is a three-sided concrete rigid frame with footings, wing walls, and headwalls all proposed to be precast. Having precast sections in one way is one way to support accelerated bridge construction, otherwise known as an ABC technique. This technique could significantly reduce the road closure time to approximately two months. The road will remain open while the rest of the work is completed with daytime lane closures. By replacing the bridge in one construction phase, the construction of the footings are completed in dry conditions with the use of a copper dam while stream flow is maintained along the existing stream channel. The design accommodates site constraints and the required hydraulic conditions. This facade will be completed with a masonry stone facing, which will match the look of the existing bridge and blend in with the park surroundings. As previously mentioned, the existing stone walls are constructed to a height of three and a half feet to meet safety requirements for both pedestrians and vehicles. Sidewalk on the east side will be located on the interior and the end walls will be curved inland to eliminate the requirements for metal guide rail. The hydraulic opening of the bridge is proposed to be thirty-eight feet. Currently, the center pier, which tends to collect debris, blocks the hydraulic flow. The proposed open culvert will increase the hydraulic efficiency of the bridge. As previously mentioned, the debris will be removed from the channel within the work limits. There will be vertical improvements, which include raising the bridge per FEMA requirements. The design raises the bridge eleven to eleven feet, a change of about two and a half feet at the at the bridge center. This also allows for hydraulic efficiency and to mitigate flooding caused during extreme storm events. This is a bridge of, this is a few pictures of the, another bridge in town that shows the type of stone facing that we would be doing and the curved end walls. So you can kind of see from this, you know, the type of natural stone look that we're looking for. And rather than having guide rail extend out the ends, we have the curved end walls. This is just kind of a few different angles of this bridge project, which will kind of match. This bridge is actually on Brook Ridge Drive over near the high school. So this would be something similar to what would be looked at from the park area of where we'd have a single span and then the natural stone look on the parapets. With the curved end walls. So this is a very similar look to what we're proposing. I want to remind everyone, as stated previously, the purpose in the modifications to the elevation of the bridge is to comply with all regulator regulations, including your building zone regulations, along with FEMA and Connecticut DOT. DPW does not represent or want the residents to believe this modification will in any way improve the flooding on Sound Beach Avenue as outlined in the cider mill brook drainage study. Those improvements will need to be addressed as a separate project at a separate time. Inland and wetlands and the Conservation Commission are working along with DPW and other town departments on a resiliency study that is in the draft stage that is also looking to address some of the flooding in coastal areas. This project does not address that specific issue. The limits of the regrading here of the project are shown in green. The limits of the road regrading are where the two red lines are located. On the following slide, I will present the change in the elevation of the road as it compares to the existing grades. The blue box actually represents the bridge itself that is proposed. The change in the elevation at the center of the bridge is two point six four feet. From the center line of the bridge, the taper to the center line to the end of each impact area is a hundred feet from the center line of the bridge and it's eighty feet from the edges of the bridge. I want to note that this does not impact the elevation of the traffic circle near the library, nor does it impact the Forest Avenue intersection. To accommodate the increase in the bridge height, the grades at the corners will be adjusted to the, you know, to the limits shown in green where it will match the existing grade. So if you pay attention to the area in the red, I'm going to show you on the next slide that same area. So this is kind of a blow up that shows the bridge lines in the middle here. And you can see at the very middle of the bridge, we're raising it two point six five. But by the time we reach this traffic circle down here, we are matching at the grade. And Forest Avenue is actually further off of this page here. Each of these little marks are ten feet apart, and that's the increase to the existing ground elevation. This here is a rendering.
What's the existing ground elevation at the center of the bridge before you add the two point six three?
Nine.
It's around, it's around eight point seven five, somewhere in there, exactly.
Thank you.
The exact number, but it's around eight point seven.
Yeah, I get, okay, I thought it was, for some reason I want to say nine, but okay, you would know better. Go ahead, Mr. Michael. So there's what it's going to look like.
So this is the rendering of the bridge as you look from the park towards the residential properties. Standard bridge maintenance or repairs of projects, DPW typically does not, is not required to create renderings, but due to the change in elevation, we decided to obtain this representation of the bridge. The red line that is shown on this slide indicates the existing pavement surface elevation of the bridge. The stone which we will construct will have the same look and style as the existing bridge and match similar to what I'd shown in that earlier slide.
Mr. Michael, do you remember what the elevation changes were the last time we discussed this?
The elevation change at the bridge itself was approximately, was basically the same.
But your taper was, was much, was different because you didn't taper it. You didn't, now you've got that, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the taper went all the way up to past the library parking lot.
Right.
And we were taking the low point out near the library and we're also raising it almost to West Elmwood on the other way to bring that section of the roadway out of the FEMA flood zone as well.
Okay.
But due to this, you know, due to this only being a bridge project, we're not addressing those matters at this point in time. It's strictly for this bridge construction.
Okay. All right.
So this, so this rendering basically goes from the, you know, from before the traffic circle to Forest Avenue to the right, and you can see the difference between the red line and where the existing paper, the proposed pavement line is, is the modification to the project. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much and open to your questions.
Uh, commission, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I, I'd like to sort of see us a sketch side by side view of the existing bridge versus the proposed bridge. Including, you know, the outtakes on both sides, just so we can get an idea of how much this really changes Sound Beach Avenue. It's, everything that Mr. Michael's presented is very straightforward, but I think it's a comparison will be most telling.
I think that's a good point. I think that I would appreciate to understand that, you know, that some of the details that, and how the, the end of the stone parapet really looks, what, what is the the top of the parapet look like? How close, you're saying it's like and kind, well, it from, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly what the original one looks like because it's been a while since I've been there. But it doesn't remind me of the existing bridge. This is going to be much higher when viewing it from in Benny Park, and it's going to be a much more grand in its, in its presence. So that concerns me a little bit. I think that the mass of it is substantial. And it's higher. So it becomes quite noticeable and, and an important feature in the park. And so these details all of a sudden become more significant. The, one of the ways to cut down on the massing is instead of having the parapet three and a half feet high, you could keep it at a lower el, uh, lower elevation and simply put in a beautiful handrail that goes up to three and a half, so you can see through it, and the mass would be much more diminished and much more of a park set, it just seemed to maybe fit into the park a little bit more nicely. So I just, there are a lot of those kinds of the devil's in the details issues with a little project like this. It could be very nice and sweet, or it can look like not that much attention was given to the design. So I don't know how anybody else feels, but I'm concerned about that because we don't always have an opportunity to engage in these conversations like with that bridge in Bruce Park. And this is an opportunity to give a few comments.
I have a question. I wondered how, how does this proposed new bridge and its design fit in with any overall plan for flooding in the area? In particular, what impact will it have? Will the new bridge have on neighboring roadways and properties during extreme storm events?
So the bridge will have a positive impact. It will have a larger capacity to allow more flow into the downstream area. The downstream area is Benny Park, so that is, does not impact neighboring property owners. When we look at this, it will not have a negative impact. We've had our consultant review that and they have, you know, confirmed that there is no negative impacts on any of the neighboring property owners. It does allow for the proper flows through the bridge underneath the bridge so that water can get underneath the bridge, the roadway and on either end because of prior comments that we've heard about not wanting the roadway. Those may, will be flooded potentially due to the existing conditions. But this bridge will not have, you know, should not have water going over it.
Uh, Mr. Michael, who's paying for this work?
Yeah.
The project comes, the project is being paid for through the town's funding. However, the town is getting a grant from the Connecticut Department of Transportation for the project. For a hundred percent of the construction, the town's paid for a hundred percent of the design process.
So the state of Connecticut is paying for all of the construction of this bridge?
Correct.
It was, you're asking, you're asking, because it was originally some funding. The last time we looked at it, we had some state funding possible. Is that why you asked?
No, my question is, Mr. Michael, the state is going to cost, is reimbursing or giving a sub percent of the construction costs. But it needs to be, it needs to be code compliant to their standards? To receive that money?
The bridge needs to be code, the bridge, when we construct bridges in town for them to meet all state, federal, and local standards, which would require this, including FEMA standards. And that is part of our requirements through Department of Public Works when we do bridge replacement projects.
Okay. If we had some latitude and we actually didn't build it to the state standards, will we still be okay with that money coming in?
I do not believe, I do not believe the money would be coming through for this if it was not built to state standards.
Okay. The existing bridge right now, is that close to being under a weight restriction or anything? Is it, is it? You said that it's actually part of it was seventy-seven, part of it was nineteen twenty-seven. Are we going to be experiencing weight limits on this bridge anytime soon?
We have not done a load limit test on the bridge. On the bridge has been in poor condition. On the bridge has been in poor condition since 2009, I believe, and we've been working through this since 2012 to get it, to get a replacement for this. It's very likely to be subject to a load limit if we were to do testing of the bridge for the load limit. And in the event that we did that, then we would have to post it, and vehicles would then be subject to going on potentially some of the other roads in the neighboring area.
Okay. So in, in reality, actually, no, the bridge, we're replacing the bridge. This is a structural replacement of the bridge. And as part of this, we're getting a minor benefit in the flooding in the area. Is that a correct assumption?
We're creating a new bridge that has a larger hydraulic opening, which improves the flood capacity of the bridge.
Great, okay. That's all the questions I have at the moment. Thank you.
The one thing I would like to just clarify on that, though, too, is if the, the bridge elevation is not increased, the width of the opening in order to meet that hydraulic opening capacity would need to be widened significantly, which would look somewhat unusual from the park area, because there's a pretty decently narrow channel that follows this area, and the new bridge is looking to kind of match that existing channel area. And if we were to try and construct the bridge to meet the hydraulic needs, it could significantly widen the width of the bridge opening, which would make a significant change to the, of visual appearance.
Right, that's along the path of travel on Sound Beach in terms of what you're saying as width. Is that, or is it?
It's the width of the bridge, is what, width along the waterway.
The waterway, okay.
So it would be perpendicular to Sound Beach Avenue, so the opening underneath that you would see.
Okay, the, just one more question. The actual width, you know, parapet to sidewalk to roadbed to parapet, or to sidewalk to parapet, can you describe, is it similar to what's out there, including the walkway, the wooden walkway? Is it slightly larger, slightly smaller?
It is basically the same. It might be slightly larger. When I talk, when you consider the width of the wooden walkway, I do not believe that that currently meets the ADA code compliance. So when we put in the parapets and the proper sidewalk width on the bridge, that does require us to be slightly wider.
Okay, I'm just getting kind of, kind of getting a point of reference. I'm actually looking at a street view of, of what's out there right now. So it's about the width of, of what's out there, plus, including the wood walkway. Thank you.
Including the wood walkway, correct.
If you, if you want to share that, Nick, I just hosted you.
It's on, it's on a different computer.
Yeah, there's a way you could do it, but it's a pain. Okay. Anybody else have questions or comments?
I just want to ask a question, might be completely irrelevant, but, Mr. Michael, is the depth of the waterway something that varies depending on water flow, and, and does it have to be managed, or no?
So the depth, the depth of the waterway definitely is based upon rainfall data. There is a set, there is a outlet control structure at the bottom of Benny Pond, down near the railroad tracks, that sets Benny Pond at a set elevation of around five and a half, I believe, and that holds, you know, that's what makes Benny Pond look like ponds. That keeps a water level underneath this bridge at about that elevation. So we tend to work from that elevation upward for the allowable pathway for water to flow underneath the bridge.
Okay, so, but if, so is if the depth of Benny Pond changes and gets filled up, does that affect this bridge?
When, when we have rainfall events, the water does raise the elevation of Benny Pond, which does then, you know, by flowing underneath here, this is kind of the downstream section of the waterway, of the drainage area. And so, yes, it does, I mean, it does.
But does it, does it kind of back up from Benny Pond, or is it, is it backing up from the other side? Just curious how that works.
It's, it's, it's a mixture. I mean, in rainfall events, the Harding Road Bridge actually is a bigger restriction than the Sound Beach Avenue Bridge. So there does become a slight backup at Harding Road, and then it overflows Harding Road, comes downstream to this bridge, and then it goes underneath this bridge, because they're only a few feet apart. And then occasion, you know, and then the other piece that we have to deal with is tidal events do come back the other direction. So water does come back up towards from the tides underneath the railroad tracks, up through Benny Park, and onto the in towards this bridge area during certain events. You know, for instance, in Hurricane Sandy, the elevations of the water in this area got to elevation 10.2. So this bridge was definitely underwater at that time.
Commission, any more questions?
I had one question for, based on Mr. Levy's prior comment. So was, you would prefer, I guess, like, one of my questions would be, you would prefer to see a metal bridge rail
No.
meets safety requirements on top of the stone
No.
having higher stuff that matches the existing bridge.
I would not say that. Did you mean that?
No, I didn't say that. In fact, I don't, the question is, what, what do you mean by matching the existing bridge? So I think that the, the details are important, but, no, a rail, a railing, a handrail, is what I said. So it would have nothing to do with a highway railing, highway rail, no.
But the walkway is next to the bridge.
The walkway is next to the bridge, however, because of safety guidelines for rope, for vehicles, we have to have at least a three and a half foot high protective area over a bridge opening.
Yep.
And so that can either be kind of like a, you know, a bridge rail and wall, or be just all wall. And when we look at the existing height of the wall out there, is about three feet high currently, and we'd be looking at going to about three and a half feet high, we felt that putting the extra half a foot or so on top of what's currently out there, as looking with the stone would kind of disappear as a similar, into the similar look, so.
Yeah, I think our calling here is to, our job here, per the charter, is to make sure that the proposed alterations preserve to the highest degree possible the scenic characteristics. So I do not think that we would suggest a metal guardrail.
But I would suggest a handrail.
But who would use it?
The idea is that it, the handrail would be something that gets you up to that three and a half feet. And, and you'd, and so you'd have, that would be a foot above the existing, or the, the new height of the parapet.
But Mr. Levy, I, I just, I want to make sure that I understand.
Wait, does that work?
Works in other situations. I don't know why.
It's, it's the wall. The wall is actually the safety measure for vehicular traffic, and that's the thing that actually prevents vehicles from, vehicles from falling in the water if they hit it. And that it needs to kind of be that high. If it's lower than actually a guardrail, it has to be installed on top. Is that correct, Mr. Michael?
Exactly, that's correct.
So Mr. Levy's.
I, I'm not, I'm not so certain that there, it's that straightforward. I, I know of other situations where you can put things, you can, you can use things that are like and kind, and are, are considered to be really like a handrail that could be modified to, to suit that. But also, explain to me, exactly, so the curb up to the sidewalks, is that included in this three and a half feet? I guess so, right? So it's only like three feet from the sidewalk up to the top of the parapet is only three feet? Or less, or how does that work?
Mr. Michael?
The, the height of the parapet is required to be three and a half feet.
Above the road or, or the sidewalk?
From the sidewalk, because there is pedestrians there as well.
Well.
So in, so in theory, if it was only, if you were putting curb there without a sidewalk, you could go the curb of six inches, and then the parapet of three feet above that. Because that would get you to the 42 inch requirement.
Right, because isn't that the way you designed it?
But when you, but when you put the pedestrians next to it, you still have to have a 42 inch requirement from the surface that pedestrians are walking on.
Right, at that point, you can have a handrail that makes up the difference. So I'm just looking at ideas to reduce the massing, because it's, it's really quite significant, the structure.
Compared, especially. That would reduce it six inches is all that we would be seeing, so.
Yeah, that's, that's something. And also, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to put a guardrail between the sidewalk and the cars, and then have a lower wall on the on the other side of the sidewalk, which could be lower.
I think we were trying to eliminate any sort of guide rail, because there isn't any guide rail out there today. So we were trying to match the existing look and feel of the bridge that currently is out there to have minimal impacts of, to the aesthetics of the scenic road.
There, there are guardrails that are not like the ones we see on the highway. And so it could be between the sidewalk and the roadway, you could have a guard, you can have a much more cleverly designed guardrail, which is protects the pedestrian as well, so.
There are.
Those are my thoughts.
And vehicle requirements that were required to meet.
I think that's the best shot of the existing.
Yeah.
Correct.
Now, the path is on the other side. All right.
But I think that's, this is, that's an important image to keep in mind, and how the landscape is revealed over it, and this is, this is not really interrupting it.
So, right, I see your point. How would you guys feel if we just turn to public comment? And then we'll come back to our discussion.
Good idea.
Okey dokey. Now, Renee Seb, I hope that this is the right time. Whoop, I got the wrong person. That happens sometimes. Going to try that one again. All right, there we go. Why is it, oh, Patrick, are you hitting it at the same time?
Nope, I'm not touching anything.
All right, allowed to talk. Okay, there we go. Okay, now this, we're going to try this one one more time. There we go, okay. And if you want to turn on your vid, go ahead, but don't worry if you don't want to. Okay, Renee Seb, go ahead, you're unmuted.
Thank you. I, I didn't raise my hand, but I will, I do have a couple of questions.
You did have your hand up, but you don't have to if you don't want to. Your hand is still up.
Well, okay, I'll just go ahead and ask regarding two things. Regarding the, the height of the parapet, what we're seeing will be, the, the parapet will be approximately three and a half feet above the roadway, and the roadway will be two and a half feet higher than it is now, correct?
Yes.
So if you're looking at the bridge from somewhere in the park, that whole mass will be about six feet higher than it is now, which is considerable. But my, my main question was about the stream, as it flows under the bridge, and I believe Mr. Michael mentioned to accommodate the amount of flow that this design does, to do otherwise, would require widening the, the stream bed, I believe. So it would reconfigure the shape of the the under part of the bridge. I'm sorry, I'm not an engineer, I don't have the right terms. Well, how wide would you have to widen the brick bed in order to achieve the same amount of water flow without raising the roadway?
Mr. Michael, would you like to go ahead and answer that question?
I am not 100% sure on what that width would be. I just know that it was looked at as being significant when it came to that, and we felt that the impacts to the park would be substantial.
It would be helpful if we could get some estimates and, and have an idea visually what the difference would be. Because I'm seeing in my mind's eye this increased elevation of the top of the parapet being more than six feet, that's taller than I am, more than it is now. And I just wonder if, if that could be investigated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think one thing to clarify, too, though, based on that comment, would be that there is an existing parapet that sticks up about two to three feet above the existing roadway. So the difference in the top of the wall will not be a full six feet higher. It will be probably about three feet higher by the time you go from a two and a half foot raise, and then about a half a foot or so of raise of the parapet, so.
And.
Purposes.
The, one other question, too, is if you widen as opposed to heightening, what would that do to the reading room and to Benny Park? I mean, how much land would have to be removed to accommodate that widening, presumably quite a bit?
Yeah, quite a bit. We have our design consultant, I see him in the attendees. We could see if he knows the answer to that.
Ms. Albin, do you want to, do you want to go through all of them and then come back to Mr. Michael? That's what I think we should do. Mr. Puyezie, you go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have two issues regarding this proposed bridge construction. I'll start with the aesthetic issues. The first recommendation I would make is that the stonework replicate as closely as possible, the type of stone and the and the jointing that exists on the other two stone bridges in the park that are fairly close in proximity to this bridge. Secondly, I agree with Mr. Levy's comments. If you measure from the roadway for the barrier portion of the bridge, go up 42 inches, you'll be at three feet rather than 42 inches from the actual roadway. When you get to the pedestrian height When you get to the pedestrian height of 42 inches, that last portion could be accommodated with a handrail of six inches without having the entire parapet be the 42 inches high. Also, the pitch from the center of the bridge is approximately, based on the, on the percentage grade differential, approximately one inch and four feet. So as you get away from the center of the bridge, the 42 inch height will actually decrease toward the outer edges of the bridge. The other thing I would like to address is the, is the flooding situation. One concern that I have is that by raising the roadway, you actually create more of a barrier for the water coming in the opposite direction from the riverine flooding. So if you can picture Benny Pond as a giant retention basin and the current bridge, because of its limited capacity, becomes a controlled release structure, so it's kind of like a dam. But you're, you have to visualize it with the water flowing the opposite way. Because the photos that Mr. Michael showed were actually in a, in a tidal, a coastal flood event, not a rain event, solely a rain event. So in other words, if the 2.9 inches of rain, which we get on a fairly regular basis, coincides with a high tide, that's when you get Benny Pond acting as a major retention area and actually preventing some of the water from going further inland because the tidal water is not letting it out. My concern here is that by increasing the capacity of the bridge over Sound Beach Avenue and then constricting it not more than 50 yards further upstream, you end up with a situation where it's no longer a controlled release, it's a full flow. And I'm concerned about the impact on the library and the Midwood Lane development, the homes in that area, because the increased water flow can have a significantly greater impact. Now, when, when you have a controlled release situation, the tide, the maximum high tide, if it happens to coincide like it kind of did with Sandy, even what, what happens is as the tide recedes, it relieves the pressure on that controlled release point. So the constriction can somehow be, sometimes be a benefit if you're looking at the coastal surge. So I think the hydrology should analyze it and model it in both directions in the event that we don't necessarily even have that much riverine flooding, but we do have a significant coastal surge and what the impact on the surrounding area would be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Puyezzi.
Excellent point.
So, so one thing, just to clarify, based on his comments, the high tide during those pictures was we were very close to low tide on that one storm event. So that was based upon the riverine flows, not based on a tidal event. So I just want to clarify that for the time of day and when that happened in relation to the tides. So the control structure is, actually currently, the control structure that works in this area is going underneath the railroad tracks. That kind of works as, serves as a control structure, as he was stating. This bridge in this area around the bridge, the elevations of the roadways are such that the water can flow all around that bridge. We did do all modeling, both for tidal events and for rainfall events, not just for one. So all that has been taken into consideration.
Okay, Candace Garthwaite, if you would like to go ahead?
Sure, good evening and thank you for, for all the information. I would like to agree, I agree with Mr., can you hear me okay? Cause my head is going crazy.
Hear you great.
Okay, okay. Two things, I guess we have the visuals and then we have the flooding. So I agree with what Paul Pobaisi had pointed out, and I just want to reiterate it. You know, the stonework looking similar, because some of these newer bridges, there seems to be a contrast of sort of white, I'll call it cement, I think he called it jointing. There's sort of a white look with the stones. And I don't, I don't find it very attractive. So I'm a little concerned that that's going to be the approach. I think that's what the bridge in the photo looked like. And, and then also the mass, so if there's some way to incorporate this handrail idea, I think that would be great. So then we're getting into this discussion of the flooding. And we've been told there's a hydrology that there was modeling. But it would be wonderful if we could actually see the report. Because the concern is really, as we've discussed, you know, certainly we have a tidal event and then I guess the culvert down by the railroad tracks keeps some of that back. And then with the downward flow, if the downward flow is increased, then I'm assuming, you know, it's all gonna go into Benny Pond, that's fine. But I am concerned about the Harding Road Bridge being so nearby. Which gets us to the bigger picture of the Camp Dresser Mead study of watersheds townwide, and I know Mr. Michael says this is not a flooding project, it's a bridge replacement project, but nonetheless, we can't really separate the two in this area. Because in the Camp Dresser Mead study, that was watersheds townwide, this area was deemed as the number one priority for some kind of remediation. And that was through the, through the Flood and Erosion Control Board and DPW. And so now I don't understand, if that was deemed the number one project, this whole area, because of the tidal surge and the downward flow of rainwater, we're not really addressing that issue. And from what I can see in looking at the town budgets, that there's no project planned whatsoever for this area going out 15 years. So I just, I just, I realize we're talking about the bridge, but I just don't think we can separate the flooding from the bridge.
Well, you kind of have to, I think, is Mr. Michael's point. And Jim, if I'm taking words out of your mouth or misinterpreting you, go ahead and punch me. But I think what they're saying is the bridge is in really bad shape and you have to do something at this point. So they do have a group of people working on the flooding issue, but right now the bridge is in bad shape and presents a risk. And that's their assessment, is that correct, Mr. Michael?
That is correct. And based upon comments that we received at the municipal improvement of 2018 for this project, we heard very clearly from the public that fixing the bridge is what they wanted and that the roundabout and the solution to the flooding that we were proposing at the time was not something that was desirable. So we came back to a project that was strictly fixing the bridge because it is a bridge that's in poor condition, that could be subject to a posting slash, you know, worst case would be potentially even making it have closure. But we don't believe it's in, in an imminent situation where it will be closed anytime in the next year or so, but it very, it's been in poor condition for pushing 10 years now, so we do need to do something to the bridge.
Yes, and I absolutely agree with that. And certainly just in the photo that we just saw, it's sort of a sorry looking situation, that's for sure. So I absolutely agree that the bridge needs to be replaced. But what my understanding is, is that raising the road really doesn't address flooding. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. Am I correct on that?
Ra, raising, I guess raising the road of this bridge and leaving the road raise, the road existing elevations in the surrounding area will not solve the identified concern that's in this neighborhood, correct?
Okay, thank you.
You're muted, Margarita, sorry.
Just as well, I was, the next speaker is Leslie Ash. If you would go ahead. Oh, that did not sound encouraging, Leslie Ash.
Got it, okay. I see Dennis Yaski, oh, there we go. Can you hear me right now?
We can hear you.
All right, super. Well, first of all, I'm very glad that this is getting a real discussion. And I appreciate all the commissioners' questions, I think they're very insightful. In particular, I like, with Mr. Levy, it seems to be exploring different ways of thinking about how to reduce the mass. When Mr. Michael just spoke, nobody wants a broken bridge, I can assure you. We all want the bridge replaced and fixed. But, but it becomes very odd when, when in replacing, and you're replacing it in fact, three feet higher, it's more than a replacement. It is actually a change, and so that's what we're trying to really understand. So my one question is, that rendering slide that was shown, the last slide that was shown by Mr. Michael, is that in scale? It doesn't look to me like it could be, and I'd like to know if it is. And if it is not, how do we start to understand? How do we start to get side views of what this will actually look like? That rendering looked like a very, very gentle incline. And if you look at the height of the, the stone on the side, it just doesn't seem possible that we're raising it the amount that we are. So I, I, the other half of that, I guess, is, I still don't understand. I know it's been asked a couple of times tonight. Is FEMA, is it a requirement of FEMA that the bridge be raised three feet? Or is it a recommendation?
Mr. Michael?
The rendering is to scale.
Okay.
It was created to scale. And that does show the accurate depiction of how the raising of the road will be. It is fairly gradual over the distance that it is. And then the other, what was the other question, I apologize?
Whether, whether it's a requirement or a recommendation from FEMA.
So the FEMA requirement actually is to be at, or preferably, you know, the recommendation is one to two feet of foot freeboard. FEMA requirements are to put it at least at the elevation of the flood elevation per FEMA guidelines.
Can we look again at that rendering? Because I'm sorry, the line that you had, the red line that was there, it looked like, I mean, if you were looking at it just by, by.
We lost, Ms. Ash, could you repeat that question?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, try unmuting?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, I was just asking if we could, if, if in fact that rendering is in scale, I'd love to look at it again because it did not look like it was in scale. If you look at the, the distance between that red line and, and where that old road is, or the new road is, that distance is not the same, those cars would have to be huge if that was the case. So it doesn't look to me to be in scale, I'd just like to see it again.
Why don't we wait till everybody's done with questions and then we'll go back to that? How about that?
Okay, that'd be fine, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Ms. Ash. Our next speaker is Arlene Lamazo.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm going a little backwards because I heard a lot of talk about the water going in this direction or that direction. I live on side of hill, about a block up to the north, parallel to Midbrook Lane, I know Mr. Pobaisi mentioned, and he was concerned about the effect of this on the houses in that, in my neighborhood. Well, I can tell you from 55 years of experience that two things happened, and it depends upon the, the length of time that it rains. If we have a heavy rain that lasts for five hours and the next day we have more heavy rain, what happens is that the downflow, which is very heavy, meets the coastal, the tidal water coming into Benny. When they collide, what happens is that it backs up to us. And that always happens, I can go in my backyard and know that the water has salt in it. Where did that come from? That backed up from Benny Pond. Mr. Pobaisi talks about it as if it's some sort, as if the pond is a container of some sort. It's not, it has to be heavy rain, but it can come up here. No one can change the flow, whether it's downflow or upflow, you can't change it, that's nature. So doing, talking about modifications to affect that to me is, is not, it's not rational, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lamazo. Our last speaker is Lynn Sherwood. Ma'am, if you would unmute. Lynn Sherwood, if you would unmute. There you go, perfect.
Good evening.
Hello.
My message, can you hear me?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, my name is Madeline Sherwood, I live at One Forest Avenue in Old Greenwich for the last 32 years. If you stand on the bridge and look the opposite direction of the park, you're looking at my house. So although my address is Forest Avenue, my house is essentially on Sound Beach Avenue. I've been told that my property will be impacted by a perpetual right-of-way on my property, which I don't see on these plans. Can you put that first picture up where it circled the bridge? Because I can sort of see my house from there.
Were you looking for me to put something up?
Well, you know that first picture where, Mr. Michael, the first picture where the bridge was circled, there was a red circle, it went too fast, so I didn't get to look at it too long. But I'm trying to figure out if anything was on the plans that show where my, where my property will be taken.
Sure, Michael, I think actually she's probably looking for the best view is on slide number two of your presentation.
Oh yeah, that's it. I think that's it, yeah. See, I can't see, I'm one of those people who's needs a 3D thing. I can't figure out what part of my.
The bridge, the bridge is here and her property is right here.
But how far in are you going? That's what I want to know. See, this is my, I see my house, I see the bridge, but the circle is part of, the circles are my property.
So if we look at this slide, her driveway is here and her building is back in this area.
By the trees is where you take something, I understand, right?
We're, we're only impacting the area along the roadway, which is within the existing right-of-way and existing easement area that the town has for the bridge.
So is that near that stone wall that comes back toward my property? That was in the first picture, I think? Where your, where your arrow is now, where it comes down toward those three trees?
Correct, yes.
Is that where the stone wall, so it's gonna be on this side of the stone wall, on my side of this, my side of the stone wall?
The, the.
Ma'am, to be honest with you, you are dealing with a private property issue right now.
Oh, okay, I thought this is part of the bridge project, I apologize. But I also.
I believe, I, I, Mr. Michael, is this part of the bridge project? Are you affecting this person with the bridge project?
We're making slight modifications to their property, however, the bridge. However, the bridge on that side will not extend past the, um, existing wood railing for the bridge itself. There's some minor grading that's going to be, need to be done on their property, which we've discussed with her already. And we will continue to work with her as we move forward.
And are you adding a right-of-way as she believes?
There's currently existing right-of-way and easements in this area that there isn't additional takings that are necessary.
There is not an additional, there is not an increase in the right-of-way. It is the existing right-of-way that you have.
Correct.
And you are working within that right-of-way?
Correct.
Okeydoke. I think, ma'am, that that settles it for you. And then you-
Can I just comment on Mr. Levy, Mr. Levy's comment about the railing? I think that's a terrific idea because I can't imagine walking up that three feet and down, you know, with the raised road. But anyway, you're all-
Well, you, it's not like that, ma'am. There's, uh, there's a very long taper.
So it's not like the bridge is in the park?
It's not like you're gonna, like, walk up, well, it's not like you're gonna suddenly-
The arch, the big arches in the park. It's not gonna-
Oh, okay. That's what I thought. Okay, great. Okay, thank you for your help. I'm sorry for-
No, no, no. It's a pleasure. I just wanted to clarify it for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, thank you. Rita Baker, you have your hand up. I know I said she was the last, uh, Ms. Sherwood was the last one, but Rita Baker, I'm not seeing her now. There you are. Okay. And if you would unmute yourself, Mrs. Baker?
Hi, sorry, everyone. I just have a, a crying baby in my arms. But I'd like to get, just to thank you again once more for, um, designating this area Scenic Road. Uh, we didn't have a chance to thank you at the meeting, um, the last meeting. And I hope you all saw the sign that my husband put up on our house thanking all of you. So that said, um, this is a big deal. You know, it was a big deal to get it approved. Um, we had a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion. And it's a big deal. And unless we have some drawings, some actual renderings, we, the public and you as the commission, can't really judge what this is gonna look like. And so what's the impact gonna be on the scenic road? You know, what's the impact gonna be on the beauty of Benny Park? So I'd like to suggest, if possible, that we postpone the decision until we see some artistic drawings, some renderings of what this will look like, what the stone will look like. They, um, I know Jim did a fabulous job with the Westcombe Wood Bridge presentation. And everyone was quite pleased with that. Um, although the project was denied in 2018, we did have some beautiful drawings and we had a beautiful drawing of what that new rotary would look like. So I, I think until we have those drawings, it's very, very difficult to make any decision here. And as Mr. Yessi said, the, the devil is in the details. So unless you really see what it looks like, I, I just, I'm, I'm hoping that you'll be able to postpone your decision until we, um, are able to see those.
Well, actually, um, the Conservation Commission had, um, sent Katie an email earlier today asking the same thing. They are meeting tonight and they are discussing this. And they wanted, they wanted us to hold off on this until they could send in their comments. So that's, um, another voice for waiting. Um, yeah, is that all, Mrs. Baker?
Yes, again, I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I did get, I did try to get you to start the video several times.
All right, I'll do a quick, quick one. Let me see if I can get it going.
There you go. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
So we get to see grandbabies. Um, okay, does anybody have any more comments? Um, Mr. Michael, you were gonna share that, um, that one slide. There was a visual that somebody wanted to see.
Jim, I believe it was the last slide with the, the red line.
The red line.
I'll get there. Yeah.
And if you hit the present tab, it's the little, um, button there, yeah, yeah, you can use the up and, there you go, that's perfect. So Jim, what, what does that line represent now?
So the red line represents the existing grade. And the proposed line of the roadway is approximately here. So one thing you need, people would want to think about is, looking at it from the park, you have the stone that's going to extend the height of the sidewalk, the height of the bridge structure and the height of the roadway as well. So from the top of the wall, um, down to the bottom of the stone, you're gonna see about five to six feet of stone because you have a wall height, which, um, is what the parapet requirement is of three and a half feet. And then you'd have this about two and a half feet worth of the actual bridge structure. So that means that there's about six feet there. So that's why it looks like, you know, the difference between the stone, where the stone is and where the, um, top of the parapet is, um, is much greater in height. Difference between the red line and the pavement line. It's really, that's about a two and a half foot raise in the middle and then tapers out at each end. But this is to scale and shows the taper and shows the difference in height.
Uh, Mr. Michael, so, uh, from the black line to the top of the wall at the center, that's the, that's the three and a half feet?
That should be about, um, probably three and a half to four feet, correct?
Okay, and we could actually shave six inches, you said, off of that? Uh, and it would still be in compliance?
We would, we would have to put in a railing of some sort at the top of it.
But it doesn't have to be a big ugly guardrail thing, right? No, no offense.
But the, the, the head rail at the top is a pedestrian safety issue?
Is a pedestrian and vehicle safety both.
Okay.
Because, because it's near a roadway, it would need to be vehicle safety tested. Which-
The rail, the railing on top of the wall would need to be, uh, vehicle proof, lack of better way to say that, as well?
So you could do something, this isn't a great picture because it's not stone and it's a two-rail system over top, but it would be something similar to this, where you'd have the stone at the bottom and then a railing at the top.
Right. And that's actually keeping both cars and pedestrians on the inside of the bridge. That's the intent of that?
Correct.
Okay. So if we had a 36-inch-high wall and then we'd have a pipe rail or something at the top to that six, yeah, to meet the six inches, uh, the maximums, six inches of pipe rail on the top to meet the height requirements that, that's required. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think this is a good, a good example of, of reducing the mass. And this is not the only kind of pipe railing that can be used.
Well, we're very limited in what we can use near, for a vehicle-safe rail. And that's what would need to be in place for this because if this vehicle gets on top of the sidewalk, we still have to maintain it in a vehicle-safe manner.
Okay. Um, so I think that the leaning would be to leave it open, get the conservation comments, the Conservation Commission comments. And it's, um, I think the feedback that you've gotten from us is basically, what can you do to minimize the impact of the height, not a guardrail? Um, anything else, guys, that you would say to Mr. Michael at this time?
I think Mr. Puglisi's suggestion about the, uh, Westcombe Wood Road, uh, stone is, was a great idea. It's more of a rounded river stone. Uh, Mr. Michael, if you're going to be doing any kind of rendering, uh, maybe use that as your basis for the, uh, the pattern fill of the renderings. That way, kind of a better visual when you do the renderings.
Okay, so, so we want it to look like the Westcombe Wood Road Bridge rather than the Sound Beach Avenue Bridge that exists, is what I'm hearing.
I think that might be a better, a better bet, kind of tying them all together.
So we want to, so we want to change the look of this to match that rather than maintain the existing scenic road look. So, okay, just-
Well, I'm not sure what you showed us maintains the, the existing look of, of the bridge. So, um, I think that-
The, the intent of the, the intent of the design is to maintain the existing look of the bridge.
But what you showed us doesn't.
Well, because of the height, but he says the look itself, it's a stone-facing, he's trying to make it-
But the stone is, is the different size and different shape. So I, it does not, it does not replicate it at all. So I just want to be clear, that is not like and kind.
Uh, Mrs. Alvin, do you have, uh, can you post, put up one of those pictures that I just sent you?
Sorry for the delay. There you go.
So that's the stone that's out there now on that bridge. Uh, Mr. Michael is representing that actually the bridge would re, reconstructed in such a way to replicate that stone type or that stone layout. Uh, Mrs. Alvin, if that lower, the lower ones, could you go to the picture on the extreme right? That one. So I think that's, you know, that's what's there now. I think if we take a look at, uh, the Westcombe Wood Road Bridge, that's probably more indicative of what people are, are looking for in, in and around Benny Park. It's more of a rounded-shaped rock. So I think actually maybe using that as the standard for this, this bridge as opposed to, uh, uh, going off with kind of replicating what's out there, which is iffy at best. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the base of, uh, the base of, no, actually, the base of, uh, the library is a cut stone. So, can use that as a good example. Uh, Mr. Michael, you still there? Uh, what was the, the presentation that, I don't think we saw that for, uh, the Westcombe Wood Road? What was the intent in that? Was that, you know, replicate that in a similar manner as well?
Correct. We, we put into our specs, we typically will say to replicate the existing stone as part of our plan. And we require the contractor to do a test panel before they do all of the stone work. That then we look at and approve to make sure that it meets, you know, what we intended it to be.
Right.
That's, that's our typical, um, pattern because, you know, every, you know, so, um, I'm gonna share my screen one more time really quick just to, um, make sure. Because I think what you're talking about is something similar to this.
There you go. That's it. Yep.
So, so this is similar to the Bearing Hill, this is the Bearing Hill Road Bridge, which is up in, up near Parkway School. We are more than, you know, this is definitely a replication of what we'd be looking to do out in there. We, we can do that as well. We don't have a problem with that. That's probably more, a little more similar to the Westcombe Wood Road Bridge. It's got some kind of the curved ends as well. Um, and that's, you know, we're happy to do something like this. That was, you know, we were trying to minimize the impact or the change to the scenic road for the requirements. Um, and that's why we're saying to match the existing statement. But we're happy to, um, do something very similar to this. So.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Michael.
So, um, uh, whenever you want to come back, Mr. Michael, we should have conservation. We can give you, we, we can give you the feedback. We can take a look at what you're thinking. The additional information and, um, I don't know, uh, what does our next agenda look like, you guys?
It's not the length of the agenda, Ma'am Sherwood, it's just that we're meeting on the 17th, so we've, we've lost some days. So, um, if Mr. Michael thinks that that date is, you can hit that number, but I, I don't know if he knows what the conservation comments are. So it would either be the 11, 12, 11, 17 meeting or the 12, 1 meeting.
Okay.
Add it to conservation as soon as I log off here, flip into a different zoom, so.
Okeydoke. Well-
What they say. So I will, we'll be shooting for this, the 17th, but, uh, we can let you know for sure as soon as we know.
Okeydoke.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Bye-bye. Okay, so now we are going to open the public hearing. And the first item on the public hearing is number six, which is the, from the Planning and Zoning Staff, uh, for a zoning text amendment to section 6111D. Katie, if you would go ahead?
I always have a difficulty unmuting there. Sorry about that.
It happens.
Yes. Thank you. So this is the application that we've heard, um, a couple of times now on their coastal buffers. Um, and the language that we wanted to add last time, qualifying when it would be appropriate to have a waiver has now been added. Um, I did go over this language with the Director of Environmental Affairs and also with the Law Department. Um, and I think it covers instances where you might want to waive that requirement for reasons of lot size. And when it would be appropriate, and it's hard to gauge when the, when the situation may come up. So this is why I think that the language is appropriate and that it allows for a kind of case-by-case. Um, but whatever the coastal resources are that you want to protect, you know, making sure that they are situated. You know, however, the buffer will be situated relative to those coastal resources to make sure that, um, it's, it's making some sense. So, um, just things like having a seawall would not necessarily negate the need for the buffer because not only are we trying to protect water, um, your scenarios and coastal resources from when water comes in, but also from rainwater going over properties and going out. Um, so it would be kind of a dual purpose. So that, so just because you have a seawall doesn't necessarily mean that we wouldn't want a buffer, um, in that location. So that's the way the language is proposed now.
Okay. Any comments from the commission?
Nope.
No, I'm good to go.
Okay, everybody's good to go. So we will close this matter. Oh, no, we will close this matter.
Do we want to do public?
Um, we've got no hands up, but let me ask, um, anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? No. Okay. So we will close this. Um, do I have any objections to this matter being closed? Seeing no objection, I will, uh, we will close and move on to item number seven, which is also is zoning text amendment, uh, to amend section 6100, uh, to allow for extended temporary outdoor dining permits. Ms. DeLuca, would you go ahead?
Sure, yes. So as, as you know, um, due to the global pandemic, we have issued 55 temporary outdoor dining permits throughout the town. Some of those are, um, country clubs, so it's not just restaurants that you'd find in the commercial areas. Um, but nevertheless, that was done through the executive orders that were issued, um, by the Governor's Office that afforded us that ability to do that. Um, and the way the system works is one submits an application to, um, my office. And then I have a, um, a group list that we disseminate the applications to, including fire, health, um, town risk manager, um, police, et cetera, building department. Um, and then we go forward from there. So the-
Katie, Katie, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you. Um, I'm just looking at an executive order that got issued.
Moments ago?
Yes. I'm so sorry because I read the press release on it and didn't go. Um, this is Executive Order 9K, which was issued today. And it provides for an extension of expanded outdoor dining subject to any rules issued pursuant to section five of the executive- subject to any rules issued pursuant to section five of the executive order. All provisions and approvals granted pursuant to Executive Order 7MM, which we are all familiar, shall remain in effect through February 9th, 2021.
Yeah, perfect. So I, I was going to say that we, an extended executive order is expected and I have been told it is coming any minute and isn't perfect in life sometimes.
And you know, it's funny because I don't know if anybody's listening to us and cares about this, but it's funny because I had just seen that, um, the other thing that the governor said today is we are essentially in the restaurants, if there's any restaurants listening, we are essentially going to, um, a recommendation that all restaurants be closed by 10:00 PM and that people not be out past. Um, I will send everybody that information. But it is a soft curfew. It, the idea is that nobody, that people stay home between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Um, given the rise in infection and, um, we'll, I'll send you that as well. That's in the governor's press release, but the governor issued this executive order and he, he must have come out while we were in the meeting and I was about, just look, okay, so.
So that's, that's great news. So I, I, the reason it's great news, I think, um, is that it's, I think it's more appropriate to have this kind of, um, scenario where you go against what your regular zoning is. If, if it comes from the state level, then it would be to start putting things into our zoning regulations dealing with, um, the pandemic. So I'm thrilled.
I think as well, so I, I think as well that, um, when the time comes, we may want to consider permanently changing the timeframe of our outdoor dining, but at this time there's no need because we've got till the 9th of February.
Yeah.
You're trying not to chuckle because we kept saying, well, if we wait for one more meeting, it'll happen.
Right. Well, yeah, I mean, I, I was convinced it was going to come tomorrow morning, Murphy's Law, but, so that's, that's great.
There you go. So based on this.
Was impressed that the Executive Order 7MM is, mm, you know, it's dealing with.
Yeah, it's like, mm, yeah.
No.
Okay, let's. So, uh, so now we're gonna, um, I believe staff has just withdrawn application number seven.
Mm-hmm.
And we are now moving on to application number eight. Before, before we get any more of Mr. LaRose's humor.
A joke, a joke.
Um, I don't think if anybody in the public is here from the restaurants, if you wish to say something more, please raise your hand. I, I didn't mean to cut you off. Okay. Alrighty. So with that, we will, um, go to the next application.
Well, are we, are we withdrawing this from, from staff? Is that what, what the action is?
Yes, ma'am.
Withdrawn.
She has to, I think, yeah, because we, we really are, we were only going to go to the 21st of December and I'm reading this, um.
Yeah, they had said that's what they had anticipated doing was going to February. The reason I chose in December 21st was that's what was coincident with the selectmen's closing of Grinch Avenue, which, which introduces another issue because now the selectmen are debating, taking that, um, issue up again. So I, it's just cleaner this way. It's just cleaner this way.
All right. So that's been withdrawn. And we are now going to, um, Katie, I just.
If I could, if there is anybody listening, um, if you do.
I don't think so. Everybody's like gone. Paul Maloney.
I also, I, you know what? I have everybody's email that, that has a temporary outdoor dining permit. Um, so I've been, I've been saying in touch with everybody that way, so, um, I can let them know about, um, the need to come in for tents and that kind of thing.
Okay. All right. And we got to figure out, so one thing that we could talk about at some point is this, the tents and the, how you keep people warm and all of that and what we need to do for site plans. I think it's mostly going to be in the hands of the building department, but if there's anything we need to approve.
Yeah, they do have to come into planning and zoning, um, to, to revise their outdoor dining permit. Um, but event, but ultimately it's under the jurisdiction of the building department.
Okay, so Katie, if, if Ms. DeLuca, if you would go ahead. For the next one.
Um, the next one, I think, um, Pat, who's on 11 Division?
Uh, no.
No, I'm sorry. You're, you're, you're still on my, you're doing the next one. What I mean is if your regulation changes, you're proposing the, um, the moratorium extension on.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm staring right at it and I had, um, I'm sorry, the, yeah.
It's all right. We weren't going to let you get off the hook.
I was, so, um, so this, as you know, is, um, a request for an extension of the moratorium that we already have an effect now that became effective November 6th, 2019. Um, and as, as you know, you have been meeting regularly, um, and all those minutes are on the website and we've had people, we've had workshops on the topic. Um, and big, post the moratorium decision from 2019. Um, you're also aware that we adopt, that the RTM approved the 2019 Plan of Conservation and Development. The reason that's relevant is that plan also, um, not only talks about issues with moderate income, but also with affordable housing. So we've been doing this dual track, if you will, with moderate income and with affordable housing, and now those um, tracks seem to be converging to some degree. Um, there's, obviously there's some separate and apart issues, but they both deal with subsidized housing. Um, so a, as you know, we've, we've made, um, considerable efforts and um, progress on the 6110 as it relates to the massing. But now what happens within that massing and what the incentives are, are just not quite there yet. So the idea behind this moratorium is to allow just a, um, a bit more time, um, to be able to, um, fi- figure that part of it out. Um, the last meeting that we had with the public, um, there was certain people that had volunteered information to us, uh, that they were going to give to us regarding what they thought the incentive should be as it related to whether or not it was actually enough of incentive. I mean, we can say what we want, but at the end of the day, if no one comes in under the regulation, then it's, it's pretty moot. So, um, so they, we're waiting for that information also. Um, I did suggest a 12-month moratorium, um, with the idea being that you could cut it back if you wanted to. It's much easier, of course, under a proposed regulation to cut back than it is to go forward, which would require coming back to another meeting. So that's why I suggested 12 months, really just so you could, um, have some, some flexibility there. But I, I do think that, that we can do this in significantly less time. So I'll just put that out there.
Comments from the commission?
Uh, with what? With, with what Mrs. DeLuca just said, I think actually that 12 months kind of thing. I, I kind of think 12 months, I know we can get this done. We have to get this done as soon as possible. If we're talking about 12 months and we're ready to go in two, good. If for some reason we're going to spend some time or we get sidetracked with something, at least we have a little bit of cushion here. Um, it's not that we're trying to curtail these applications from coming in. I think it's more of trying to get this regulation right. Make sure that everybody understands it. Get the input from, uh, uh, from everybody and get it up, you know, get it ready to get back out there. Uh, I think in six months, you know, where are we going to be? Are we going to have? We're going to make sure that we have this thing done and ready to go and, you know, are we going to have to sacrifice doing something else to get this finished up in that time?
Thoughts, people? No thoughts. Okay, um, at least give an indication of which way you would like to go on this.
Margarita, I, I don't think six months is, uh, a bad solution here.
I tend to agree.
Sort of, you know, shows good faith that we're trying to work, uh, to help uh, resolve this so developers can move forward with applications and it can always be extended.
Okay, um, I, I, well, we can talk about it when we come to the end of the meeting. Um, oh, um, I guess the only thing we, can we, why don't we decide that now and then we can close it? So let's just talk about how you guys feel about the date. Victoria? You have to unmute and we can only see the top of your head right now.
Six months is fine.
Six months. Levy? Levy?
I like the idea of, uh, the 12 months gives us a little breathing room and it's just less for us to think about, but if six months is, six months is okay also.
I, I think the reason I hesitate with going longer than six months is we got people who may have bought property and they've been waiting. And we said we were going to do it really quickly. Now I understand that we ran into some complexity. Katie, watching us, go ahead.
Regarding that, I mean, it, it's the same difference. So if it, if you, if we get to a point where we say we have to extend it, it's the same difference. We said it was six months. Now is it going to be another six months, say? So somebody had this expectation of six months and then we have to extend it. So I think that there's not really much difference from that point of view.
Okay.
I, I think that, uh, just the, the, um, idea of 12 months is, uh, just, uh, gives people a heads up that, uh, if, if we get bogged down, we may not get to it immediately, but, uh, we're, we're, uh, going to do it within the next year. Um, that's all.
Um, okay. Well, why don't we just close it and we'll try the motions both ways? How about that? I don't know what, there's no, um, oh, I should see, sorry. Do I have any public comment on this? Um, anybody who wishes to speak from the public, please raise your hand? No, no comment. Okay. I was expecting that we would have comment based on the emails we got.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, um, we'll close this and we'll decide it later on. And, um, Nick, are you laughing that we're asking you to make two motions?
No, 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 no. I'm just, it's, it's, I'm just thinking they're all in the conservation meeting. That's where they already is at the moment, so.
Hey, I, and, uh, Margarita and Nick, you know, I'm flexible. I just, you know, I think it's semantics, honestly. If we can do this thing within one year's time, that's great. I just think we need to, uh, focus on it.
Oh, I agree with you, David.
If you want to stay with 12, I don't object.
I, I'm, I'm thinking 12, but done in two weeks.
That's what we said last time.
I know.
First, we said, well, we'll give ourselves extra time, but we can do it a lot quicker and it, we didn't.
I mean, we're almost there this time though, which is the good news, but I'm with you, Victoria. I mean, it's, it's, you know, you kind of, do you want to put yourself in a tight squeeze if you can at this stage, I think.
You think we should put pressure on ourselves to get it done and just make sure we say six months?
No, it's really easy. You just agree with everything I've done already and, and everything that Katie's put down and we're done. We're good.
You're going to fix that retail ceiling height. Okay, let's close this item and we'll, um, we'll see how it goes when we get to the bottom line. So with Katie, you're off the hook now.
Okay.
And now we go to application number nine. She's like, what is it? Division Street? I know. Now we're up to, um, application number nine, which is Tracy C. Kaufman at 11 Division Street for a zoning text amendment uh, to rezone this parcel. Uh, who's representing them?
I don't know, Matt, Chair. Mr. Hall maybe perhaps?
Mr. Hall, okay. Um, and as soon as Mr. Hall comes on. And, um, Mr. Hall, how would you feel about combining the two applications? So we hear them at the same time?
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay, so at the same time, we will hear application number 10. Uh, Tracy Kaufman's final site plan and special permit, um, for the attached garage, detached garage, sorry, at 11 Division Street. Okay, uh, Mr. Hall, if you would go ahead.
Great. Uh, thank you, Chairman, and, uh, good evening, Board. I'm Chris Hall with CAH Architecture here for, uh, 11 Division Street. Uh, we're applying for historic overlay, uh, and the site plan review here. Uh, our request is in order to build a, a detached, uh, second residence on this property. Uh, we're requesting the historic because, uh, the accessory building is very tight to the property line, very close to the existing house, so we prefer not to use that provision of the code and instead, uh, build one further back on this, on this long lot. Um, you know, we feel there's a merit to the historic, uh, significance of this building because it is in the, in the fourth ward. Uh, and, you know, it's, aesthetics are in keeping with the fourth ward. Um, we are able to, uh, get the blessing of the, uh, Historic Commission and the Historical Society also wrote us a, a letter of support for the project. Um, you know, we uncovered quite a bit of interesting historic information about the ward and the street and this house in particular. Uh, mostly related to, uh, Irish immigrants, which the person who built this house in 1885 uh, was an Irish immigrant and, uh, about the prevalence of African-American families on the street at that time. Uh, which the Historic Commission felt was a, you know, interesting aspect that they weren't quite as aware of. Uh, as far as what we're asking for, it really is, um, that second dwelling and we're asking for a little bit of relief on the, uh, side setback as well. The, the porch comes a little bit, uh, closer to the one property line than is allowable in the zone. If we can flip to the fourth slide, if that's possible. If this gives a little bit of context, uh, the, uh, property in discussion is the middle one on the top. And you can see there's a lot of similarity, uh, between it and, and its neighboring properties. Uh, they're arrayed essentially as they stand. The left ones to the left, right ones to the right, the others are across the street from it. Uh, if you had flipped to the next slide, that would be great. Thank you. Uh, you can see here on that, the top left one, that the visibility there to the backyard is, is pretty minimal. Uh, you can barely see the existing, uh, garage there in the back, straight up the driveway. Uh, and the other house is basically right where you see the pink flowers. Uh, it's just over there. Uh, this garage we're proposing demolishing, uh, you know, you can see it in the, uh, the photo in the bottom left and a little bit on the, the bottom right. Um, you know, essentially, uh, the Historic Commission also asked us to, uh, take off the, uh, new siding and revert it to, uh, its historic details. Um, so that would be part of, of this, uh, this process. If we can, uh, go to two more slides. Uh, this is our proposed site plan. So you can see on the left is the existing house, uh, Division Streets on the far left. Uh, we're utilizing the existing driveway and just expanding the driveway, uh, a little bit out the back to create our two additional parking spots there. Uh, and two on the, uh, just behind the existing dwelling. Then back, uh, a little bit past that is, is the proposed dwelling unit. Where, uh, you know, five feet from the, uh, bottom property line and then the, uh, top one is where the porch is. Uh, if you can go to the next slide. Thank you. This is the proposed dwelling unit. Uh, it's actually a quite small dwelling that we're proposing here. Uh, the first floor is only, uh, 807 square feet, the total, uh, square footage of 1,072 square feet. The existing house is 1,460 square feet, uh, which is a total of 2,533. We're actually allowed 4,415, so we're staying, uh, quite below the, uh, you know, maximum square footage allowed in this, in this area. You know, the next one. You know, we tried to play off of the aesthetics in the neighborhood, but to keep the, the scale of it reduced. So it's essentially a one and a half story house, um, just to make sure that the, the front house remains the primary house and, uh, you know, we, we don't get something that overwhelms the existing or overwhelms the, the neighboring properties. And, um, you know, I'll just take any questions that you guys have.
I had a question. What did you say the, uh, square footage of the existing houses and the square footage of the new house would be?
The existing house is 1,460 square feet. And the proposed house is 1,072 square feet.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else?
Um, Mr. Hall?
Mr. Hall, you're looking for a relief of side yard setback for the porch?
Correct.
Could you just eliminate the porch and not have to seek the relief?
Well, we would, but the, the owners here actually want to move in this and their dream is to sit out on that porch and look out their yard. So that was really the, the whole reason for that porch. You know, sitting on the other one wouldn't be nearly as nice because it looks right at the driveway essentially.
Okay, the, the green area, do you actually do need the relief?
We actually don't. That was a mistake on the application. We actually are fine with the green area.
Okay, so we're basically just looking for how much of a relief on the?
We are at 6.2. We're asking for 3.2 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
How's the parking on that street? I was, I walked it this morning and it's a tight neighborhood.
It is. But we have, we're providing four parking spots here.
Okay. And there's a house across, and I guess it won't be, there's a house across the street toward Division that built, they looked like they built toward the back of the lot, but they joined the new structure to the old one and it's quite huge and quite out of keeping with the neighborhood.
Right.
But your proposed house is smaller than the current house and it will probably be 80% blocked by the current house.
At least, yeah. Yeah. The, the current house and the neighboring house. You know, it's essentially just that little driveway slot that you can see it through. And from on the backside of Perry Ridge, there's a huge hill blocking your view of, of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Hall, did you provide a landscape plan?
We did not, but we actually sent one in today. I don't know if you guys got it. I could hold it up to the camera or something.
Pat, we received it. There you go.
Yes. Apologize, it's a little rough here, but we wanted to get, get you something to, to take a look at for it. Most of the property is actually blocked by fencing.
Can you zoom in? Can you bring it back up, Pat?
Yeah, let me, let me open it up in a different format so we can zoom in on it.
Yeah, so those ugly lines are, ugly, ugly orange lines are existing stockade fencing that are there. So really where we're showing those kind of right off that porch, we were just talking about those arborvities in there are really about the only place where you can see this house from, you know, any neighboring properties where, you know, landscaping would, would help. You know, the back line has the stone wall and picket fence on top of it. And, you know, there by the parking area, there's a stockade fence there. There's an existing stone wall further back, but there are also no houses back there. That's just the backyard for the neighboring house. We are just proposing a few, you know, plantings right at the front. Little holly tree that would also help to, you know, block some of that little view you do have of the driveway and then essentially foundation planting. So we're just kind of really asking to put in that line along the, the property line.
Comments, Nick? Anybody?
Yeah, I just, Mr. Hall. You know, this secondary unit is 1,072 square feet. Consider anything smaller than that.
Not really. That's about as small as it can get to, you know, fulfill their, their living needs.
I see. I mean, you do realize that when we do this in our accessory apartment regulations, the limit is 700 square feet. I mean, and I know we're doing the HO and it's a different thing, but when we think about it in terms of accessory apartment, an accessory building like this one would only have a 700 square foot dwelling in it maximum.
Right. You know, an interesting thought I just had on this changes this a little bit because we did all these before the attic code changes. So I think we actually only have 807 square feet per current FAR regulations.
I'm sorry, because of the attic is less than 40% of the floor.
Right.
Is there space that you are using above in the attic area?
Yes, there's a bedroom up there.
Within the attic.
Correct. Yeah, we were just hoping to get this so we didn't have to do the, you know, attached you know, version.
Mr. Hall, what's the actual, what's the actual area of just the first floor, the footprint?
807 square feet is the first floor.
Okay, you have basement below, first floor is about 800, second floor is maybe half, the half of that, maybe a little bit less?
264 square feet.
And that's actually tucked in underneath the, the roof itself?
Correct.
So we're really looking at a 800 square foot
Right.
footprint.
Correct.
So Mrs. Allen, we're, we're kind of close there in terms of an accessory, you know, dwelling in it.
All right. Okay.
I mean, I don't know if it's any value either, but the existing garage is approximately 700 square feet. So we're really not even changing the, you know, existing infrastructure footprint by very much.
Just, you, you have some period details on the porch of the existing house. Are you replicating those or, and what about the windows and?
We weren't going to exactly replicate them. You know, we were just trying to provide a similar look rather than, you know, completely replicating the existing house.
And this is in the back, so what is, what is special about wrapping this porch around the side? So you'd need a variance?
It's, it's really just about, that's just their dream. They want to sit out there and read books and look out into their.
Is it because of the orientation? They want to be on the side?
Yes, yes. Yeah, they like that. They want to be able to look over that stone wall that's in the back. I guess they have a good relationship with their neighbors, so they, you know, want to be part of it.
Just in plan, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of asphalt there, a lot of coverage. I wonder if there's an opportunity to any impervious, I mean, pervious surface there of any kind. Like where, where you park as opposed to the roadway itself.
It looks like actually two of the, two of the lots or two of the spaces are on pervious service already.
Yes, I believe that is correct. Yes, the two back ones are on pervious, pervious asphalt.
Okay.
And, and the second house is the same height as the other, as the historic house?
No, it's quite a bit lower. The new house is it's only 23 and a half feet tall to the peak.
Is, is the idea for this to look like a, another house or to look like?
Yeah, they want it to look like it's like their little cottage.
It's supposed to, well, it's very long and, and so proportionally, it doesn't look much like a cottage in back of this other house. It looks more like a, another, I mean,
Yeah.
You know, so, so the massing is, doesn't give me that feeling.
I mean, that's just a product of the lot shape because it's so long there.
I think maybe, Mr. Levy, what you're trying to get at is that actually it would have been maybe better served with, if it was emulating an accessory building to the house on the street. You know, akin to a garage or a barn or something.
A carriage house is, or something like that.
As opposed to just copying, being, emulating, you know, the dormers and the
I agree.
You know, and, and those things, those elements, I think it, it it, the, the character is different from what we're trying to get at here.
It's making it, it's making it look like a two-family lot is how I'm seeing it. It's, it's making it look, and it, now, again, that is something that they are allowed to do as of right. They can do two-family, but they would be in one building in this situation because they don't have the setbacks to do what they're doing. So they could tear down this house, you know, they could tear down this house and they could build the two-family. And, but if they want to accomplish the character goal, this should look like an accessory structure to the historic house. I mean,
I mean, it would be, Mr. Hall, do you have an aerial of that, of that area? I only say that because when you, when you are on, oh, what is that? The road that the park's on and that the hospital's on, but anyway, you can kind of, when you look at that neighborhood, you can see that it, to me, it looks like the rest of the neighborhood in that it's one house back to back with the other, just the way the streets are laid out. So to me.
That is, to agree with Katie, I'm gonna play devil's advocate with myself. What the HTC said was that this makes it look the way, the way it would have looked pre-1926 zoning. Because it allows, I mean, I'm gonna read it out loud, and offers an opportunity to reclaim building history when multifamily construction meant having two separate dwellings on one lot. So if you wanted to look like it looked in 1926, then you would have it look like two houses. That's kind of a decision the commission needs to make. I'm ambivalent about it, really honestly. I, I don't.
I, I think what Peter's suggesting to make this look more like a garage or a stable, much more appealing to the eye if you're walking down the street.
Well, I don't know if a garage is the right image, but.
Well, no, not the garage, but I, you know.
Cottage, I think a carriage house.
Garage apartment you can have. And then the FAR looks like it's now .28 based on a reduction in FAR square footage.
What's .28?
I, I think so. I just did a quick calculation.
Yes, yes, right, right, right.
Picking out several hundred square feet.
Right, correct.
Well, Mr. Hall, how would you feel about talking to your client and seeing if they would be amenable to having it be more of an accessory structure look and a carriage house look? Now, I, I am reading, again, you guys, I'm of two minds because it's my personal preference as well, but the HTC feels, and that's why Katie was asking, actually, why don't you do, Mr. Hall, would somebody do what Katie had asked, which is to show the existing neighborhood? So Katie's point was the HTC's point, which is, right, Katie? Am I right? Yeah. So, which is that in the old days, when you had two houses on one lot, it looked like two houses. And that's what the HTC thinks is okay. We're all saying, ugh, but I.
I don't mean to imply that there's something wrong with it. I'm just kind of saying, well.
Yeah, we could do better.
Yeah, I think it's not 1924, you know, or you know, I feel in there.
How better I can share it, but I just took a picture of my school and I can show you that, that aerial.
Mr. Leroy, if you can go to our agenda, I think it's page 241 has an aerial photograph.
But this, this house, this area doesn't have carriage houses. People in this neighborhood don't have carriage houses.
That's the point that HTC was making, that the traditional development of this neighborhood is like two houses. Are you okay, Victoria?
I think that could look out of place.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that, that's what, that's the point I was trying to make. When you drive around in the neighborhood, you don't really see that kind of thing. It, it looks like it's two houses on one lot or that it's, it's, you know, one house on one lot with another house behind it on another lot. It's like, it, it looks like a big, like, almost like a little bit of a rabbit's horn in some way, like there's just, you know, you don't really, you can't figure out where the driveways would be for, to get into that, you know, it's just, that's what I, I mean, that's what it looks like to me and but, but when you're on the street, you see there is a very continuous look. I mean, you, you know, there, that's, that, there is a character there, no doubt. That's lovely neighborhood, lovely.
Actually, I, it's interesting, actually, taking a look at what Mr. Hall has given us. You almost could think that this house or the new house at one time maybe came off of Perry Ridge. Because it's set behind it. That was, it was a separate residence. It had a driveway on Perry Ridge. And I think actually I am, actually am looking at the, the aerial photograph and it's quite tucked back there. There's, you know, it's going to take up a, a good portion of the backyard, but.
Mr. Hall, was someone gonna share that?
Mr. McCree, what, what, what page was that again on the agenda?
241.
241, thank you very much.
This was, yeah, actually supplied by Mr. Hall. You can actually see it. It may have to be rotated, Mr. Leroy.
The interesting thing about this aerial, Nick, is you go up to the intersection and you can see a couple of very large houses. In, in this orientation, it's a lower right-hand corner, but some quite large houses.
You're speaking about these houses down here, Mr.?
Yeah, I mean, versus this, you know, this much nicer effect for the neighborhood, I, I think.
It's retaining the, the predominant streetscape of a single-family residence. The gable end, the porch, that kind of thing. So as you drive down the street, you get a sense of consistency. I think actually what's very interesting to see on this one is just to the right of the, the red box there. You have a house that's similar in nature and then one more and the backyard is just completely paved over. I think that's something we definitely like to avoid, but, you know, those three buildings, kind of maintaining that, that's a really great idea. And I think actually even to the, to the, to the, to the left again, you know, there's, there it is, the streets, the streets get, gets, gets broken, but one more over, Mr. Leroy, to the left.
Yeah, but on that, yeah, gets broken by the big house.
If you scroll down, I don't know if this is live or this is just a picture, but if you kind of scroll down to the left. You know, like move the picture up, that's where, that's where I was talking about, like, yeah, if you go down there a little bit further, yeah, in that neighborhood, keep going down a little bit more.
That's just a still image.
Yeah, it's a still image, so this is fixed, so.
Right, and I, Mrs. DeLuca, I think you're right, actually, even across the street, it's, there's, there's one, actually directly across the street. Same kind of thing. It's a porch and a gable end, you know, that faces the street, so I think this is so tucked behind everything, it's, it's not gonna be compromising that streetscape. You know, yes, if it was, if it could be done as an accessory building look, that, that would be great, but I think it's, it's complementary to what's happening out there already.
One thing, Nick, I just, as I look at this, you go two houses to the right. You sort of have a sea of asphalt behind the home. And is that what we end up with here? Because we're losing the garage and the parking that would have been in the garage?
No, no, I think actually, if anything, I'm, and I'm looking at the, the existing site plans. We're not really losing or gaining. It's almost a wash of, of the existing asphalt that's out there. We're not really losing or gaining. It's almost a wash of of the existing asphalt that's out there. You go out there, you're looking at, you're looking at the it's a garage, actually, that's out there with a big, you know, turnaround in area in the front of the garage. So you're really cutting that back. There are actually active parking spaces, but I would say it's, if anything, from engineering, this is being filed as an exemption. So the impervious surface has been reduced.
Or is within the de minimis amount? Okay.
But that, I think, actually, one of the things to consider is that this is has gone off to HDC?
Yes.
And HDC is okay with how the ways presented, plus or minus some detail?
The applicant received a recommendation for historical of historical overlay designation from the HDC, ten sixteen twenty, you might want to note that date. The latter enclosed blah blah enclosed with, so the letter enclosed, so then what I read you is what they said. So they had some comments. I'm scrolling to
They've asked us to once, you know, if you guys approve our application to go back to them for a final before we can re-building permit on the back.
Well, they want to, they, and we can do this, what they want them to do, I think you guys saw this, is that they want to go back to the original siding.
The old house or the new house?
Well, isn't that interesting? I, yeah, Mr. Hall, why are they telling you to go to the original siding if that garage isn't going to be there anymore?
It's the main house they want us to go back to the original siding.
Got it. Okay, okay.
That's their exchange for supporting us, I think.
And then the windows, and then, so what we would do, Nick, I don't know what page this is on of the full agenda, but what we would do is they want them to come back with a plan of the of the new dwelling, and they want the windows looked at and do true divided, they want true divided light. Okay, so do I, do we have any public comment on this application? If so, please raise your virtual hand. It's no, okay. So where do you guys want to go with this?
I find it close.
Wow, okay, I was like, did you have any more comments? Anything else? No, okay, so Mr. Hall, if you have nothing further to add, it looks like everybody, Nick, did you agree with closing it?
Yeah, I think we're good. We'll have two, two things, one on the HO and then one on the site plan.
Yep. Okay, so we, question for you, it is now almost eight PM, we've been here for three hours. Do you want to take a break before we do the last app and the decisions? Or do you want to soldier on? We've probably got another half hour, forty minutes.
What do we, what do we, we have one, no more applications, right?
No, Joel Berger is still before us.
Oh, yeah. Oh, forgot that completely.
I'd go for a break.
Yeah, okay.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes. So we will reconvene at eight ten?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Oh, I can't even see my screen. Okay. Now that we have everybody, we go to application number eleven, Joel Berger at all, at two eighty Railroad Avenue for a final site plan and special permit to expand the Belenona space.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Attorney Christopher Bristol, representing the applicant. Both applicants, they actually, Joel Berger owns the property and the Belenona restaurant. That's the restaurant space that we're talking about. The site, as most of you know, is on the south side of Railroad Avenue. It's actually basically campus of the three properties there. In terms of parking, at the very least, there's the front building, which is the main building. It's it's a mixed-use building, two eighty Railroad Avenue, and that's about twenty-one thousand square feet. There's also in the to the sides, the back of the sides, there's two other approximately seven thousand foot office buildings as well. On the site is about one hundred and fifty parking spaces. If there is the parking space just to the right of the building, as you look at it, which is on the west side, there's a surface parking area. And if you go back behind the property, behind the building, there's also surface parking there. And there's actually garage spaces under there underneath the building, which for a long time I forgot about. On the surface, there's about ninety spaces or so, give or take, and there's about sixty in the garage. The building that we're talking about, the front building, again, it's about twenty-one thousand square feet, it's mixed-use. On the first floor, it's basically used group one uses. There is the, there's locksmith, there's the subject Belenona restaurant, there is a crew restaurant, there is a pure bar, which is a fitness place, there is nail salon and hair salon, and a cleaner's, I think. On the second floor of the building is, they're basically small offices. There are a lot of them are sort of one-offs, two hundred, two hundred square feet, four hundred square feet, eight hundred square feet. Upon information, those are basically sort of small satellite offices for personal, you know, for small the small companies or personal use. You don't get a lot of heavy use up there. The space that we're talking about, again, it's a Belenona, it was formerly Will Morton's. Before that, it was Taj, Taj Indian, Indian Restaurant, the space, I believe. It's approved for twenty-four seats. It's about sixteen hundred square feet of area, floor area. And the proposal is to expand to about three hundred square feet into a adjacent space, converting it for retail and using it with with this restaurant. What is proposed, understanding that parking is an issue, we were only asking for a number of seats, which just which work within the space to not not change the parking. Which we could talk about parking in a little bit, but proposed is, again, twenty-four, twenty-four seats are proved existing, and the proposal is to have twenty-nine seats, but basically spread them out a little bit between the two areas. It's a Italian restaurant, do a heck of a lot of takeout, they do much more takeout than they do in-store dining. And actually, the this extra space is adjacent space, although they will seat customers in it certainly. It's really on the rare occasion where they have maybe a private gathering where they want to have a separate room and do something like that. So so that really is the impetus for this for this proposed expansion. In terms of parking, the in terms of how you calculated the the extra five seats that we're proposing translates to an extra two two parking spaces, which is the equivalent of of what it would be for retail space. Now, I understand, it's actually this this past briefing was one of the, one of the handful a year that I wasn't able to attend. So but I spoke with with Jacqueline, and I understand that there's some concerns about the parking, which we have to address today. What I think is interesting is that you can look at the site and there's the parking, parking surface spaces to the right. I think most people gravitate toward that for the for the youth group one uses that we're talking about. I think people often forget that there is a parking, parking, surface parking spaces behind the building as well. And and the garage spaces, again, the garage spaces, I personally forgot about, and I've been, you know, I've been here a long time. And those are rarely used. So in terms of the other uses in the property, again, that we have the two other separate buildings that share the parking, share the surface parking, those are primarily office buildings, so those are daytime uses. What I was wanting to point out in terms of use of restaurants, especially in this particular building, to contrast what we're doing with the crew restaurant, crew restaurant is over on the other side of the building, has actually proof for forty-nine seats and has less space than we do. So in terms of how much parking they eat up for how much space of the building, they actually take up more, more than us. And I think in terms of correlation, in terms of discussing parking, I think it's more most appropriate to talk about crew. Crew is is they all, they have a lunch, they have some lunch, it's not a, it's not a heavily heavy daytime use for them, it's a restaurant, primarily the busy times are sort of eight to ten at night. And when we're talking about Belenona, the restaurant here, their their busy time is sort of some lunch and also sort of the after-school, after-work time, you know, between five and seven, so their uses are much, their their busy time is much different than the crew restaurant down the way on the other side of the building. In terms of traffic, I guess I also wanted to point out that, or import traffic and parking. In my opinion, if this were a standalone space, even if it's a three hundred square foot space or so, its potential as a standalone space to draw in more cars and create more parking as a standalone space would be greater. I mean, you have a deli in there that's less than twelve seats. And that would be perfectly fine in there. That wouldn't, you know, technically cause a parking issue, but it has the potential to do a lot of turnover or convenience store or something of that nature. So what I was looking at is this expansion, this using of this adjacent space in connection with existing restaurant will not be as bad as if it's used as an existing sort of higher-volume standalone business in its space in that adjacent space that we're expanding into. So all things considered, I thought it was a good and worthwhile thing to do. It's a small business, a local business. And again, we were only asking for the number of seats that that work with the parking numbers and the area numbers that we have. We'd like to ask for more, but we were very sensitive to that when we brought this to you. I also have the business owner, Cody Crudell. He's on the call somewhere. If you have any questions for him about operations, business, busy times, or anything like that, I don't know if he has anything he wants to say, but I also wanted to point out that he's here in case you have any questions about the business for the site. Maybe.
So, Mr. Bristol?
Yes.
Making me work when I'm trying to look at these seating plans, but I want to make sure I have this correct. So right now, we have twenty-four in the restaurant, tables of four and a booth that has eight. And the proposal is to move two of those tables of four to the new space, add one table of three and one table of two, that's the five, but then a total of twenty-nine.
Yes.
Okay. Now, the retail, I guess, retail, if it's calculated correctly, from what I get from the staff, two are required?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's about, that's about what we were calculated as well.
And then when we calculate for restaurant, it's five?
No, I would, I think I think I set up for another two spaces.
Okay.
The intent was to match, again, I mean, I
Their requirement with the extra seats, they say is two, that it stays at two. So something went wrong with that math just now, Nick. What they say is the application, the applicant proposes five new seats within the three hundred square feet of restaurant space.
Right, it's five and three. I know, I see it. Okay.
So what they're doing, it's because they're moving tables that we are already counting. So what they're saying is there's only there's only a net increase of five seats.
Right. And technically, they technically give you a quote that the parking spaces is actually only two. Because you're actually have, you have three spaces already that are earmarked for retail if it was there. Now I got it. Okay.
Yes, that was the intent. I mean, whenever I'm faced with these, and I've done a whole bunch of these over time, you know, I try to keep, I try to keep everything within the bounds of what the original parking count is. I mean, like I said, you know, I think the site would work okay if we were asking for more, but being cognizant of the parameters that are traditionally recognized, that's why I set up the way I do.
Right, and the hundred and forty-nine, that's inclusive of the sixty in the basement in the
Oh, yeah, yeah. About, I didn't, I'm taking it, I'm extrapolating those numbers. I think the last count was one fifty-two based upon the last thing in your files. I counted one forty-nine when I was looking at it, so that's why I said about one fifty. And we could be off. But that's why, what I was, I guess what I wanted to point out is that even me personally, I forgot that there's a back end of back of the site and also garage spaces underneath. And and Tony could also mention to you that the garage spaces underneath the building are, a lot of those are empty because a lot of those
Nobody knows they're there. I've never, I've never known that they're there ever.
And I, I can't, I think I, I think I had one of those things where I recognized it when I worked on, you know, on a space in the building ten years ago, and then all of a sudden, when I was looking at this now, I said, oh, by the way, there's spaces there. And that's why, although I think I phrased it to Jackie about proposing we'd have employee parking in the back, maybe that's something we could have employees down in the basement or something, you know, in garage spaces in order to make sure the surface spaces are available.
Yeah, that makes the most sense because everybody parks, I mean, I've parked in the back a lot when I've been there. So yeah, okay, that makes the most sense. I never knew there was underground parking. Where do you access it from?
From Railroad Avenue. If you, if you're going, if you're going down, sound going down
It's on the
If you go down Field Point, and you make, and make a left onto Railroad, it's the, it's the second, it's the entrance that's closer to Art Street. On the, on the east side.
It's on the east side of the building. I've never seen it. Okay.
I thought this, it looks like it actually goes to the to the site next door, but it loops around, and there's a hard right that goes underneath garage.
Got it. Okay. All right. Commissioners, any other questions on this application?
I also want to point out the health, the health department said that we were okay and we did
That you got the grease, the grease trap done. Yes, and congratulations for getting it done. That was a good thing.
The small wins, I'll take it.
Well, we'll take the small wins when we only have to ask people a few times. Anybody else?
Mr. Bristol, does the bar place have evening hours or evening classes?
They, I think they're done at seven-ish. I I looked at that meeting up to this, I believe they're, I think, have early hours, but they end around six or seven, I believe.
Okay.
So anybody else from the commission have any questions?
No.
Okay. No, do I have any comments from the public? I'm just looking that up for you.
Of the hours?
Yeah. It's a little tricky right now because
Oh, yeah, nothing, well, nothing is as it seems anymore.
Because nothing is normal. So I was just gonna check it.
I'm looking at them too, hold on.
Nothing is normal.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Well, I mean, actually, the the hours are all over the place. I mean, some days, today, it closes at eight, tomorrow closes at two, Saturday at one, Monday and Tuesday, seven and eight respectively, Wednesday, seven, so.
That's what I remembered, that the last class is around seven on weekdays. Okay, so that's what I told you guys, that if you go in the evening after work, that they've got a huge crowd of people that comes in directly after work who work downtown. And it conflicts with the dining hour. However, now knowing about the sixty spaces underneath, I'm much more comfortable because that was really the issue. And right now, since restaurants at midnight tonight go back to fifty percent of capacity. Yes? Indoor, fifty percent of capacity at midnight tonight. So based on that, you're not going to have a parking issue anytime soon. If there's no more questions, we could close this application. Mr. Hardman?
Yes, I'm ready to close.
Gus? That's a thumbs up from Ms. Gus Levy. He's nodding. And Mr. McRae?
Yes, please.
Lost in thought. And, oh, wait, Mr. Crudell would like to speak. Actually, you're ready to speak. Mr. Crudell, you just need to unmute yourself. Or Crudelli, I don't know how you pronounce it.
Never let up.
You need to unmute yourself. There he goes, I think. No, if you would unmute yourself. Oh, you're on two computers.
Oh, hello, I'm here now.
Okay, you're here now. Okay.
Thank you for your time. I was just having my hand up in case anybody had any questions.
Oh, no, we knew you were there. Well, I had, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so in that case, well, I'm getting rid of your second computer anyway. If you don't have anything to add, I'll, we'll just move on then.
Nope, nothing at all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, with that, then we will close this application.
Thank you.
And with that, is the end of our hearing. And we can make some decisions. Our first, well, Nick, which direction would you in the mood to go in tonight? You're muted, Nick. He's making a lot of sense.
What I put up with, let's rip through the amendments and the restaurant and get to the HO at the end, because I want, there's a little bit. Okay, so text amendment. Okay, so, uh, text amendment, buffer plantings coastal zones, PLPZ twenty twenty two, two, four. Uh, the amendment will modify section six, one, one, one coastal overlay zone. Paragraph D six standards of the building zone regulations. Uh, the commission finds that the suggested revisions are in keeping with the objective four point three of the two thousand nineteen P O C D. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the text amended as proposed.
Um, do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
Mr. Hardman has seconded. All in favor, Mr. Hardman?
Aye.
Ms. Goss?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. And with that, we go to the next one.
Okay, uh, text amendment for extended temporary outdoor dining has been withdrawn.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure we get it on the record here. Uh, text amendment extended moratorium for sec, from section six dash one, one, zero, G. PLPZ twenty twenty three oh five.
So just make the motion with any timeframe you want, and then we'll argue with you.
Okay, now. I have, I have both written down in notes just in case. Uh, the memo will allow for an extension of a twelve month moratorium from section six dash one, one, zero, G. Use regulations and special requirements for dwelling dwelling units permitted in the business zones. The extension of the moratorium will run six, twelve, whatever, to a specific date unless otherwise modified. Uh, the commission finds that the suggested extension is in keeping with objectives five point one and five point four of the two thousand nineteen P O C D. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the time extension as. One would be amended and one would be proposed. So that's our discussion.
Okay. Any points of disguise? What do I have?
Okay, just to give you a sense of this, uh, six months from now would be Tuesday, May fourth, two, twenty twenty one. Twelve months from now would be Friday, November fifth, twenty twenty one.
God, she's amazing, isn't it? How twelve months from now is the same day as today? Okay, I'm with six months.
I'm with twelve because we always can crawl it right back. I, I mean, if we're done next week, we're done next week.
Okay.
If we're done in on November, you know, fourth. We're done.
I want to let Katie vote. She's kind of on the twelve month side. Goss?
I'm sort of on the six month side.
Okay, so, all right, two and one.
Happen seriously, I, um, just for whatever this is worth, but I think what will happen is people will come in with eight thirty G applications. During this period because we've already, we've been a year and now this will be another year. And I think they'll say, I've, like you'd said, Margarita, that people have their properties. Um, and, um, they want to do something, so they, they'll, they'll make a move and I think they'll come in with eight thirty G. Which is fine. I'm just, you know.
That's fine. So, but you're saying that in order to keep, go ahead, Dave.
No, I, I, I don't think it's, uh, fine, honestly, because we all talked about eight thirty G and. I think we need to listen to Katie. Uh, I think we need a, a, a solution here. Uh, for six, one, ten that, you know, as we've said, may include both moderate and affordable. But, but to get an eight thirty G, you know, we're just going to sit there and go, wow, this is true. This is really tough.
And we want to have incentives and and regulations that that, um, dict, you know, that that tell people these are, these are what we want and this will be easy and. And fast track for you if you come in with these, you know, with with an eight thirty G application, quote unquote, that looks like X, you know, and.
Can I make a comment or not? Are Biden allowed to speak on this?
No, decision mode, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, that's your loss.
Okay, um, it's lucky we don't.
Can I speak on behalf of Peter?
Yes, you can. You can do the Peter principle.
Yeah, yeah. But Peter Levy, you can speak on behalf of.
You can't cede your time to the good gentleman, you know, Tennessee or whatever.
Peter Levy, did you want to say something?
I, I, um, uh, agree with Dave and I agree with Katie. And Katie hasn't somewhat amended her thinking on this, which is fine by me. And I'm happy with. The, the six or twelve months, but the six months, if it, if it really has, uh, that opportunity to ward off. Any, um, eight thirty G applications, that's probably better for us. I like that.
Margarita muted. Yeah, could, okay, we want to do something that's thoughtful on eight thirty G. Um, so.
Think we just need to show the development community that we do want to have a proposal that.
So it's.
Model.
So we've, we've decided to do three months then?
I was just gonna say, I mean, to that end, I mean, I'm, I'm not being facetious. Maybe you want to do three months and you can always obviously come back and do another moratorium. Um, but if, if you're trying to send a message, three months sends a better message than six.
Let's do three months.
Oh, okay.
We can always change it, Nick.
I like, I like.
You know that Edgewood thing we were gonna do? You know that Edgewood idea we had? Yeah, we'll forget that for a while.
I told you, you don't get to be on the implementation committee unless you burn the candle at both ends.
I'm burning the kettle, I.
Okay, when you guys are done, can I make it? Can you remind me to say something about Edgewood when you guys are done? But I, I had an epiphany last night.
So you're saying three months.
We're doing three months.
Three months. Okay, then when we sit down and we talk this, we're not going to get kind of crazy ideas and stuff. We have a true focus and get this done and get it out the door as fast as we can.
And no whining about how many meetings we're having.
And that'd be January fifth, by the way.
Thank you.
Right after, right after New Year's, so.
Okay, all right.
I have to say something. January fifth is not three months from now. It's two months.
Two months.
I'm sorry, I can't stand it any longer.
That's what I'm.
I watch the show every night and I just makes me crazy when I hear things like. All right, goodbye.
All right, Nick, you better get us back in the ship. We're getting punchy.
Okay, so here we go. This, uh, this is how it would be play out. Uh, the extension of the moratorium would run for three months.
February fifth.
February fifth.
Two thousand twenty, uh, Friday, February fifth, twenty twenty one. Therefore, motion to approve the time extension as amended.
Um, can someone look, we, we haven't done a schedule for next year yet, have we?
No, I, I, we're gonna put it on the next agenda.
All right, we'll call it that for now. Okay, do I have a second for Nick's motion?
I second.
Okay, Hardman has seconded. And for the votes, Hardman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Goss?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
McRae?
Aye.
And Albin is also an aye. And with that, it passes five, nothing. We now have. Um, now, Nick, where would you like to go now? Do you want to do the restaurant?
Yeah, let's, uh, get that out of the way. Um. Let's get that out of the way too. And, okay, uh. That's not it.
Are, are we skipping the HO? Is that what I just?
Yeah.
Yes, we're pretending it's not there for the time being.
It's a little bit more complicated. Okay, uh, two eighty railroad avenue, PLPZ twenty twenty two, four, six, final site plan, special permit in the, um. G B and C O Z zones applicants requesting a change of use. Uh, to three hundred square feet of an existing retail space to our restaurant use and then connecting, expand the adjacent restaurant. Uh, commission finds that wetlands in the, uh, applicant received permits need questionnaire sign off from wetlands. Dated, uh, eight twenty eight indicating no permit required. Uh, zoning issues comments dated eight twenty eight twenty requesting submittal of detailed floor plans for review. Uh, sewer division commented dated ten twenty six state that the applicant has satisfied prior comments relating to grease trap certification. Health department issued comments dated nine twenty two twenty stating their plan. That their plan review conducted prior to submittal of a building permit. Uh, parking the existing retail space needs two parking spaces as required by section six. One, five, eight to remain in compliance with available onsite shared parking plus or minus a hundred and forty nine spaces. The applicant has agreed to no more than five new restaurant seats for a total of twenty nine, twenty four existing and five new. Within the combined new and existing restaurant area. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the site plan with noting the following. Uh, staff to coordinate with health department in recording, uh, in their files, the approved seating figures. And the applicant is to address any outstanding staff or interdepartmentate issues. Anything else to add?
Um, we had some language about the parking yesterday, but I don't really think it's necessary if they've got that extra parking because.
No recommendation that, uh, employees park in the garage or anything like that?
We could.
Hardly any part, there's, you never really see cars.
I've had trouble parking there.
Oh, you have? Oh, wow.
Yeah. But it because of, of bar. So my frame of reference is evening bar classes. That's why I've been so concerned about this all.
It's not going to your restaurant, it's actually going to evening classes someplace else. Okay.
But, all right, so, um, let's leave it as it is. I think, you know, we could ask for the employees to park in the garage, but. Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Hardman seconds. Um, Hardman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Goss?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
McRae?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. Okay, so that goes five, nothing. And now we get to the only sorely one, really.
Okay, um, Tracy for zoning map amendment, PLPZ twenty twenty two.
Do you want to talk? Does anybody want to talk about it? No, okay, go ahead. They don't want to talk about it.
Uh, whereas the applicant seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone eight thousand twenty nine square feet of property located in eleven division street. For the R six to the R six H O zone. Uh, the applicant has satisfied the procedure of HO zone designation as outlined in six, section six, one, oh, nine, B, two. By providing significant background on the existing structure, its original owners and relevance in Greenwich history. Uh, the proposal was referred to the historic district commission, uh, for come out, uh, comment as provided under section six, one, oh, nine, B, one and three. H D C submitted a letter dated ten sixteen twenty endorsing their recommendation. Uh, of the application for HO designation. It's also noted that an endorsement of the HO designation we received from the Greenwich Historical Society. Preservation Network dated ten nineteen twenty. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the application for zoning map amendment to rezone. Eight thousand twenty nine square feet of property located at eleven division seat from R six to R six H O.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Hey, we got Goss. Goss has seconded. Uh, all in favor, Hardman?
Aye.
Goss?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
McRae?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, five, nothing. And so we move on to the next part of this, which is the final site plan and special permit.
Okay, eleven division street, final site plan, special permit, PLPZ, uh, two thousand twenty. Uh, I think I've got those numbers wrong, but we'll fill that in. Um, applicant seeking final site plan and special permit, uh, probable to remove a detached garage and construct a new single family dwelling. Uh, the applicant has re, has been granted a HO designation for the property as outlined under section six, one, oh, nine, B, two. Uh, proposal was referred to H the historic district commission for comment. Uh, H D C has submitted a letter dated ten sixteen endorsing their recommendation for the HO. Um, commission finds that, uh, wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire dated ten thirty. Indicating no permit is required. Zoning issue comments, uh, ten twenty nine twenty indicating their proposal meets the requirements of the building zone regulations. With incentives. Uh, P P W engineering applicant has submitted a drainage exemption dated eight four twenty. Okay, bear with me on this one. I just got to make sure I've got the right. Yep, that's not it. Okay, um, sewer issue comments dated, I don't have that date in front of me. Indicating no issues to be addressed there at this, uh, during P and Z phase. Uh, let's see, uh, West Cog issued, uh, comments dated, uh, ten sixteen twenty that, uh.
We messed up. Actually, the West Cog, the West Cog goes into the rezone.
Zoning.
It's a rezoning and they say it's no intermunicipal, so we could just amend that. Well, um.
Yeah.
Roberts rules has a process where we have to do that, but I think we could just say it now, right?
Yeah, it's, it's okay. It's part of the record anyway, so it's not, it's not, um, you know, it's, it's not a big deal.
Definitely, okay. So therefore, motion to approve the application for sign off site plan and special permit, uh, with the following conditions. Uh, the applicant is to return to H D C. Uh, to address their comments, uh, from the October sixteen, twenty twenty letter.
Regarding siding, the windows and.
Well, it's in the letter, so we just, you know, it's gonna cover everything.
Right.
Uh, the commission. Uh, the commission, uh, I don't know, how do we say this? Grants the relief of, uh, side yard setback. Uh, as requested for the. I believe it's the west elevation to permit the construction of a, uh. Exterior porch, open air porch. Um, and it's noted that actually they had asked, they requested a relief of green area, which is not necessary. Uh, anything else to be added to that?
No, I mean, we said that they, um, H D C wants to see the final plan and that's the most important thing. And, um, any comments on the landscaping that it provide as much screening as possible?
Okay.
Cause we didn't really, I mean, when we finally saw it and maybe we could ask H D C, why are you rolling your eyes?
Because the, it came in at like ten minutes after five.
Yeah, and we kind of glanced at it during the meeting, but I think why don't we just refer it to H T C to look out with the application? Why don't we do that so that it's consistent?
Landscape plan.
Yeah, they can just look if there's enough screening. I mean, they're, they're smart enough to do that.
Okay.
They're good. I mean, I don't know what else to do because we didn't comment on it already. I mean. Uh, we can say that.
How about that? Let's just say no, no arbor right.
Like server right. You know that the, 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 the planting plan, uh, provide adequate screening of this more intense use? How about that?
That's fine.
That's, that's enough. That's really all we need to say. I don't know if we really want to say, but H T C is going to see it. Um, is that it, Nick?
Uh, I just want to make sure Mr. LaRoe has, uh, the relief, uh, the side air setback is three point two feet.
Thank you.
And I think that's it.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Levy seconds. All in fa, no, let me do it one by one. Hardman?
Aye.
Goss?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
McRae?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. Great. Um, okay, we are done, guys.
I'd just like to commend all the gentlemen on the board for their keen fashion sense.
That everybody's wearing a red tie and a white shirt?
Yeah, we just.
I was like, wow, Victoria and I got it wrong. Victoria, Katie and I really kind of messed it up, but I was looking at.
Anyone, but I didn't know which one of this was me and this, when I looked back for a second, I was like, wait.
Yeah, I, I almost got up and put a, and put a black jacket on so I could keep Victoria company. Katie, there was no hope. Cause you were in lavender. Um, anything else? Anybody wants to catch up on?
Katie, you're muted.
Muted.
Wonder no one's paying attention to me. I was, I had all kinds of jokes about my pink shirt and pink ties. Um, so I don't, I don't know.
Sorry? About the, about the, that, that triangle.
The landscaping thing, yeah. I don't know what you guys think about this, but I'm just throwing this out there. So you know how we have, we just did the crocuses yesterday? And that's like a sea of color. And then we've got Crocus Hill and then we'll have these five other spots that are going to be the same thing. It's going to be this big pop of color. And it's going to come out in the spring. What would, and then when you think about your own garden, sorry, you can tell I got excited about this last. But when you think about your own garden, how you plant your own garden, what you want, I think, is you want, you know, day one, these ones flower. Day ten, those ones flower, and it just keeps happening in your garden.
Is this the planning and zoning commission? The hell are you talking about?
How did this happen? I don't know, but Nick, I, I mean, is there? How did this happen? I don't know, but Nick, I, I mean, is there some sort of way where I, I'm just thinking, like, you know, in other words, it's crocuses and then you plant something else. And so it just would be such that the entire post road would be in bloom the entire time. Um, where it could be, but it would be a various, you know, like you plant the various stuff that.
Okay, so, but here's the problem. Katie, let's, the site plan. No, so here's the deal. We have to have the encroachment permit to do that because it requires a fair amount of ma- I mean, the, we've got to figure out the indemnity issue because that is.
With the triangle, with the triangle, a good portion of that land actually, I believe belongs to the town. And it's, it's an interesting piece of property because it's actually, uh, there's more mature trees on it. Um, but I, I understand where you're coming, Katie, and I, I, I think that's it, that's a kind of a thing where you got crocuses, uh, on the hill and in Cosco. Is there something in this one that can be different that blooms in, you know, July?
The crepe myrtles, and here's the thing, you know, we were talking about in some places we were going to have to do under canopy, you know, those kinds of things, uh, under canopy trees if we can't risk tall trees. So you could do crepe myrtles, you could do, which flower in August. So yes, you could do that, but we have to be able to maintain them. That's going to be the bottom line. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it's a great idea because it's back to what Fred was saying is to create, um, ongoing attraction and ongoing highlight for Greenwich. And I just don't know when we started buying crocuses. I, it's just weird.
I just say we go to the Tournament of Roses. Let's go.
I'm all for it.
Um, what's interesting about this.
As long as you give him the handrail on the bridge, he just wants handrails on the bridge.
Yeah, the, uh, the infrastructure on this particular site actually is done.
The what, the what, Nick?
The infrastructure, there's a really nice sidewalk, there's a proper bus stop. There is actually a bench out there.
Yeah, no, Edgewood's really nice.
So, I think actually, when you're talking about, talking about, uh, uh, you know, something different, maybe this is your, your, uh, spot for public art.
Yeah, would be amazing, right? I haven't left that, I haven't left that, um, thought. By the way, the modern, um, I was thinking about this, I, I did talk to the modern before they even, that's the building next to town hall. I did talk to them when they were in their site planning s- phase, stage, because the, the corner there, when you go, um, you know, leave ta- um, Fuel Point Road, you take a left down Sound View, I, that corner is so well traveled and I think that would be such a perfect spot for something and they were definitely amenable to it. Um, when I spoke to them in the beginning and, um, it just, you know, they just needed to get the building up or whatever. There's, they're still amenable to it. So I don't know, I have to look at the plan and see what's town land and what's their land, but, um, they were interested in, in potentially putting something on that corner there. And, and if it's on their land, we don't have to get into indemnification issues and whatever, they can have that on. So I just think that would be such a, a nice thing. Um, particularly.
Plenty of time to amend their plan, Katie, by the way.
They what?
They have plenty of time to amend their plan. They, they got a lot of soil, open soil over there still.
Yeah, yeah.
I noticed I, I was over there the other, oh, election day. I was looking at that site. I was like, when are they going to finish?
Yeah, but they, there is a lot of stuff on that road, like, um, uh, you know, planting things or whatever that, that I think are attractive. And the one across from town hall, kind of on the corner of Davenport there, um, they were looking to do something. I think it was a different owner, a different prospective buyer who, who, that was his idea, but whatever.
I thought, uh, the, the, uh, space at the modern was the stockade for the, uh, for the naughty, naughty P and Z members and that's where we're going to. So everybody drives by, they can throw, uh, rotten vegetables at us.
We don't need to be stockades with vegetables.
I'm going to sign off because I, I, I'm just part of the periphery here. This is fascinating. I, I support everything everybody said.
But you have to come out, Peter, you, Peter, you have to go out and plant bulbs next time.
Uh, no, I don't. But three months. That is not in the job description.
Hey, you know, you know Katie was on television twice yesterday.
And I, you know, hilarious because, um, you could tell I wasn't a gardener because I, I was walking with some gardeners and they correctly had their little knee pads thing and I was like, oh yeah, that would have been smart. That would have been smart. But, but I had to, I had to laugh because the segment where they talked about what we were doing with the bulbs and everything was followed up shortly thereafter with the segment about, um, Wiggles is the chinchilla who was voted the mayor of Bridgeport Beardsley Zoo.
Yeah, he, he or she was in the paper today.
Hilarious.
He ran, he ran on a grain reform platform. It was very.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, so I was going to tell you guys something important, but I can't remember what it was, so it couldn't have been that important. Um, I'll see you guys, um, Monday for the moderate income housing meeting.
Hey, what time is that again?
Uh, one PM, one PM.
We're all there.
One PM Monday, moderate income housing.
I'm seeing you guys tomorrow morning though, no?
Only the affordable people.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, see you tomorrow morning.
But if you want to make a news, oh, I know what I was going to tell you guys. So Andy is stepping down and is not renewing. But that doesn't mean he can't be one of our expert people on a task force that we create down the road. And I mentioned that to him and he was amenable. So if you all like that idea, we could do that and Andy would still, um, be around and participate in stuff we're doing. He just wouldn't be on the commission anymore.
Love that.
So he, he liked that. And, you know, and because he's interested in process improvement and he's, and so all those DPW issues and stuff, so eventually we could, but we probably need to think about doing that, oh, Katie, don't get mad at me sometime earlier rather than later.
Well, good news is moderate income will be over in three months, so.
And I don't have to price crocuses for a while.
She just jinxed the whole thing. That was it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah. But Katie, did you know that there was a right end for the crocuses to go into the ground? Because I never knew that. That's, I was like, I.
I actually did know that, but I was surprised to see them putting three in the hole. I was surprised by that.
Especially because you want to say you bought thirty thousand crocuses and you're.
Well, you will, they'll be a little, they're a little bit of pockets. Otherwise they're like little scraggly, they, they.
No, it, it's also because one dies.
Oh, what, oh, because there's a success rate? Oh, I got you.
One dies and the others?
I don't know.
They're like, they're like black widow crocuses.
I don't know. All right, you guys, um, maybe somebody's hungry. All right. Bye, everybody. See you.
I don't have the link for tomorrow morning.
Um, I will resend, no, tomorrow morning affordable?
Yeah.
Um, I will send it to you. I didn't know you wanted to come. Yeah, everybody's always welcome, but some people, it's, I, it gets posted. Anybody wants to come, they're always welcome.
Go to the agenda and do it, but, uh.
No, no, I'll send, I'll do it to you right now. Um, I'll send it. Victoria, anybody's interested, they're always welcome to join.
Okay, um, Pat, can you send me the next meeting if you happen to have it?
I do, but you have to listen to my joke.
Go ahead.
Do we all have to?
We've, we've been subjected to two already, but go ahead, give us a.
Well, I was just going to say the chinchilla won with his argument. He used fuzzy logic.
Oh.
Oh, oh.
What happened to the grain crap platform? I liked that one.
Oh, I liked the grain one was a little too highbrow. The fuzzy logic was the little more of the sweet spot.
So, wait, what meeting do you need, Katie?
Um, no, no, it's a next meeting sheet. It's an internal process thing.
Oh, okay.
You don't have the email from, um, uh, Peter? I'll just put it to top. Don't worry about it. Nevermind, stupid question.
I don't have Monday either, but I haven't put it in yet. Okay.
No, um, Monday, um, I think I sent it out to everybody. Oh, it's in your calendar. You have to go in and accept them in your calendar.
Yeah, that's what I'll do.
Just go into your calendar.
I'm at my calendar, but I don't see anything at the moment.
Monday I didn't, I, Monday you should have in your calendar, but I will double check right now. Okay.
All right, well, I'll go and search here.
All righty.
All right, thanks, everybody. Bye.
Bye.